Welcome to the April 25th City Council Meeting. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Helgeson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you so much for this wonderful day. Thank you for the fact that we have citizens that can come forward and, Lord, I pray that you will bless our time tonight. We may have some differing opinions, but, Lord, I pray that we'll have a spirit of tranquility, grace, and kindness to those that we agree with and those that we disagree with. Thank you so much for our Honorable Delegate Kathy Byron, who has served so diligently for decades, trying to promote and fight for the right to life, the right to liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you for her steadfast, honorable work, and thank you for her dedication to the city of Lynchburg and the region and to the Commonwealth of Virginia. Lord, we ask for a spirit of calm over Lynchburg tonight. Thank you for our police officers as they're striving to arrest criminals in the gang violence that has plagued this city. Pray that you will bless the Commonwealth Attorney and their office as they diligently try to prosecute. Lord, I pray that the court system will use justice as they remove violent offenders from society. Pray that tonight, as we deliberate on the business that is before us, that we will seek your wisdom. Without your wisdom, we are nothing. Thank you for this group. Thank you for this body. Thank you that we can act, and thank you for our freedom, and thank you mostly for your son. And we ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your honor, to the holy saints, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight we have a very special recognition. I'm honored to get the opportunity to present Delegate Kathy Byron with a key to the city. Oh, can everybody please be quiet? The meeting has started. Thank you so much. I'm honored to present Delegate Kathy Byron with a key to our city.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda for one more speaker for public comment. Didn't make the deadline.
Okay, yes.
Peter Sepharati, speaking on the end. Proposed school budget.
Amendment agenda to add Mr. Sepharati?
Add Mr. Sepharati at the end.
Okay, I think we had another person that wanted to be added as well.
I would also like to make a motion to also allow the NAACP to also make comments.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're adding...
Actually, what I'll do is I'll change my motion for Peter Sepharati and then the NAACP. Does that sound good?
Peter Sepharati and a member of the NAACP to be added to the agenda...
At the end.
At the end.
For public comment.
Okay, so noted. Well, just we'll do a consensus vote?
I'm okay with that.
Is that a fine? Everybody okay with that? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. I will restart my recognition because it's worth all of the sentences that were put into this presentation. I am honored to present Delegate Kathy Byron with a key to our city. This honor is a symbol of civic recognition and gratitude for individuals whose service to the public rises to the highest level of achievement. Delegate Kathy J. Byron has been a member of the Virginia House of Delegates representing the 22nd Legislative District for more than 25 years, since being first elected in 1997. As delegate, Kathy has represented portions of Bedford, Campbell, and Franklin Counties and the city of Lynchburg. She serves as Chair of the House of Commerce and Energy Committee and is a member of the Finance Committee and Communications Technology and Innovation Committee. Kathy, for your service to the citizens of Lynchburg and the region, and on behalf of Lynchburg City Council, we present you a key to the city, and we thank you for your dedication and achievements.
We'll just do this.
Yes, no, I was just... I can speak whichever way. Everyone's in the room together. So first of all, I want to thank Mayor Reed and the rest of the council for this tremendous honor that you have bestowed upon me for many, many years of service in representing Lynchburg. It has certainly been an honor to represent the people of Lynchburg and the entire region that I represent, which included part of Bedford, Campbell, and Franklin County as well. You know, when you're entrusted to represent the citizens for over 26 years in state government, you get to know them. And the people of Lynchburg have been unfailingly patriotic, hardworking, God-fearing, humble, generous, patient, kind people. And it has been a distinct honor of mine to be able to serve them for 26 years. I believe you have the best law enforcement in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I have been privileged to serve with them and to assist them in many ways. Thank you, Chief Zudema. And each one of you that are sitting out here that came tonight for other reasons, because I know you certainly didn't know it was getting the city, the key to the city. So I think it's just wonderful that you care enough and you came out to express your opinions to your representatives, which is something that many people did to me over the years. Some very boldly, some screaming kind of loudly at times too, which is okay, as long as you're respectful. But I think it's just wonderful that you do that because we need to hear your voice. We have been entrusted to you. You vote for us. We represent you in government, and we really do care about you. There's tough decisions that have to be made, and we need to hear your voice as we make those tough decisions. But it has been a distinct honor. Once again, I want to thank City Council for this, but most importantly, I think I need to thank the people of the area for entrusting me to be your delegate for 26 years. Thank you.
Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into three sections: public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to council for deliberation. You're now moving on to consideration of adopting a resolution approving the allocation of fiscal year 2024/2023 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Program Funds. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Melville Walker.
Good evening, Mayor Reed and members of City Council. Tonight's City Council is conducting a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Program Funding, recommendations of the Community Development Advisory Committee, CDAC. The city will receive $708,843 in CDBG entitlement funds and $378,083 in home program entitlement funds. CDAC conducted a public meeting on March 30th. This committee reviewed the submitted CDBG and home program applications, and applicants presented overviews to the committee for the requested projects. CDAC formulated project recommendations for consideration by City Council. These recommendations and project summaries have been provided to you. Councilmembers Dr. Sterling Walder and Larry Jackson are the council-appointed members of the CDAC and participated in the recommendations. At the conclusion of the public hearing, City Councilmember Dr. Walder, as Chairman of CDAC, will present these recommendations to you for approval. As required by the CDBG and Home Program Citizen Participation Plan, a public notice for this meeting was published in the news in advance and through social media. City staff has not received any written comments prior to the meeting.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any phone calls or emails?
There are none.
Okay. Well, the public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with council. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay, a second?
Sir.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Again, I want to thank the CDBG Committee, Melville Walker, her team for presenting the information. One thing about the CDBG funds, they are so crucial to our community. It helps with housing, helps with Habitat for Humanity and Rush Homes, and also so many other projects, the Lighthouse Project they're doing, building some homes as well. So building homes, also home assistance, rental assistance, as well as down payment assistance for homeownership. So various, so many programs. Also, they handle the homeless population in the homeless line versus the homeless. There's some funds used for that as well to make sure our city is working together for a homeless population. So these funds are so crucial to our area to help reduce poverty, to help get persons out of poverty, and also not just get them out of poverty, but give them some wraparound services like counseling services and job training and other things to keep them out of poverty. So I'm glad to be a part of the committee. I'm also thankful for the citizens of Lynchburg who serve that committee as well, that provide input, different regions, from Temperance Hill, Diamond Hill, the rest, other regions. Dr. Farmer is also there. Any other CDAC committee members here today on the committee? I know Dr. Farmer is. But again, we so thankful that it's part of the citizens of Lynchburg on the committee that make the recommendations. Thank you. Councilman Taylor?
You said well, brother.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, then we can go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 6-0 with one absent.
Wonderful.
I need to make a personal apology. It's Councilmember Larry Taylor, and I knew that. I apologize.
As long as you call me for supper.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Okay, moving on. Consideration of introducing a resolution approving the fiscal year 2023 Third Quarter Adjustments. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Donna Witt.
Thank you. This is an item that came to the April 11th meeting as a budget item in briefing. In a short summary, these items were predominantly the appropriation of additional dedicated revenues and grant funds over the adopted FY 2023 budget. So after the public hearing, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? All right, any calls or emails?
There are none.
All right. The public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with council. Do I have a motion?
A suboot.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Well, we want to vote then.
The motion passes 6-0 with one absent.
All right. I would like to ask Council by just a motion of consensus to move the general business section of the agenda in front of public comment because we just have one thing on general business, and to keep Chief Zudema from having to wait till the end of public comment, would you mind just allowing us to move that before public comment?
I would say you've got an expected part of time, right?
Can we just agree to do that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're moving general business before public comment. Consideration of introducing a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 City Federal State Aid Fund Budget and appropriating $362,047 for the purchase of law enforcement equipment and technology for the Lynchburg Police Department. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Police Chief Ryan Zudema.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you. As you said, this is $362,047 of funding that comes through the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. It is funded to us through the Department of Criminal Justice Services. There is no local match. The funding will be used to purchase 52 Panasonic Toughbooks for officers, an additional drone for critical incidents and search for missing individuals, as well as a tactical robot and a, what is called a Throwbot, or a smaller version of a robot that can search attics, crawl spaces, things like that, as well as what's called a search stick that this device can be put on. All these items, the last three I mentioned, are used to keep our officers safe and certainly keep our community safe and keep us from having to put officers into areas that they don't have to be. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, may I have?
Great, thank you. Any questions? Councilman Helgeson?
Thank you. And thank you, Chief, for getting this grant and making sure that you can enforce as much as possible getting the technology that you need. I'm thankful that what you've done and you had a pattern of it where you have looked at other grants, you've also looked at things that you could do in your budget that didn't require the use of the reserve for contingency. And thank you, and I'm happy to approve this, and I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay. Any further discussion? Council员认itions?
I just wanted to ask you, the drone, is that incorporated with it? Because we just appropriated for the new drone response vehicle, is that right?
Yes, we already have a drone program that consists of several drones. This is a larger drone that we don't have capability of right now, so it will be used in the vehicle that you previously approved funding through.
Okay, awesome. So this kind of completes that package and fantastic.
Yes, sir.
I'm excited. You going to demonstrate the robot for us in here when you get it?
We could certainly arrange that. If that's council's pleasure, we'd be happy to do it.
That would be great.
Dr. Walder?
He's just managing for his service to the community and bringing in some funds to help us fight crime and to make our community's citizens be safer. I was also earlier with you today at the, I think it was Ceasefire, I believe it's called. What was the operation Ceasefire, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, with the Commerce Attorney Office, Beth Harrison, and Attorney General. Various other partners were there and working together, and it's so much stronger when we pull our resources together to make a difference in our community, to fight crime, to reduce crime. I think it's also the arrest of Lynchburg, Dr. Orin Cardwell, Beacon of Hope, Iron Lives, Peacemakers, Jubilee Center, and various partners working together to help reduce crime in our community. So thank you for helping lead the efforts for Lynchburg. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Getting that half a pound of fentanyl off our streets, that is critical. You know, we got, it just goes out into our neighborhoods, and thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, our men and women are doing some great work out there, very proud of it.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate it. Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes Chair of Plan.
Okay, great. Okay, we will now move on to public comment.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I forgot two things. First, I do want to recognize you have a Mayor's Eats Council student with us today. It's Mary Lambert.
Hello.
She is a senior at Heritage High School. She's off to Tech next year. We'll miss her enthusiasm. I believe this is her second or third council meeting, and she's also the president of the Mayor's Eats Council, so happy that she's here. The second thing, we also have several young students in the audience tonight who have signed up for public comment. They are mixed within all of the numbers since it's a school night. If council would like, we can move them up so they are first.
Keep them here. They get to see governor.
Did they request to go earlier because it's a school night? They did.
Some students did, and then I offered it to others if council would allow.
How many students do we got?
We have three. I've counted four or five, I believe. I can name their names?
I'm fine with that. Would you just mind calling their names out first then, and then once we get through them, then we'll start with Ms. White.
So the students that I have are Isla Wasson, Naquan Williams, Jaden Wernett, Sadie Hagman, and then Kalen Snyder, which I have talked to her mom, and I think they're okay with waiting till the end. So if that is all, I will call up Isla Wasson first.
Want to get them in line?
Sure.
Just line up.
Was it Isla Wasson?
Yep.
So let me read the rules real quick, okay, before you start speaking and before you put the timer on, all right? During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, City Council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager, him, for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, or use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. So since we have students in the audience especially, let's make sure that we demonstrate respectful behavior. So with that said, go ahead.
All right. Good evening. My name is Isla Wasson, and I am an eighth grader currently attending Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School for Innovation. As a student, I feel the need to express how immensely beneficial a raise in the payment of our educators and school employees would be. These committed individuals devote their time, energy, and attention to their occupations with the intent of educating and supporting the youth of Lynchburg, as well as assisting in the preparation of these children to achieve success in their future. These caring professionals are always willing to do the absolute best for their students. This is exactly why teachers are advocating for higher pay. It is for our students, it is for our community, and it is for all of us. We want to attract exceptional, qualified teachers and staff to our cherished Lynchburg City Schools. We want higher pay so that we can acquire the staff to drive us safely to school, to create a nice, clean place to learn, and to serve us nutritious meals that sustain our students throughout their day. As a grateful and proud LCA student for almost a decade now, I believe that school employees should be paid, at the very least, $15 an hour for the work that they put into ensuring the success and happiness of the students in our city. Teachers should, without hesitation, receive an increase in salary so that they can continue to provide an exceptional education to the youth of Lynchburg. Without these necessary changes made to salaries, how can schools such as Dunbar continue to be the place that they are? To me, Dunbar is a place full of opportunities in arts, music, and academic advancement that should continue to be available to our community. I wrote this letter to provide support to our devoted teachers and staff, for they have always shown so much support for each and every student that walks into the school building each and every school morning. Thank you very much for your time and consideration of my proposal.
Thank you very much. I know we want to applaud her because it was great, but we can't, so please just... You can do this. All right, next...
Madam Mayor, Isla was number 24 on your agenda, if you would just remark that.
Yes, thank you.
Number 30 is Naquan Williams, representing the Good Gang Initiative, followed by Jaden Wernett.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Naquan Williams. I go to Empowerment Academy. I live in the 3rd Ward, and these are my Good Gang members. And we are here today to relay the issue of the youth of Lynchburg that have been having trouble and all that. All right. Starting with the teenage violence that's been going around Lynchburg, Virginia, the youth tend to lean towards illegal and violent activities and/or crime in the city, primarily due to the lack of public activities that propel them towards positive development. It's not enough positive in the community, and the inability to positively express that emotion and pain leads to life-threatening outcomes such as fatal accidents, death, and hatred. And with that being known in my age group, it should be more talked about in the community, and good gangs make good citizens.
That's all? Okay, thank you very much. Yes?
Madam Mayor, students of the Good Gang Initiative sponsored by Universal Ventures.
Yes, thank you very much.
Next was Jaden Wernett, followed by Sadie Hagman. Jaden?
No?
Do you have family in the burden?
Okay, thank you.
All right, Sadie Hagman? He was numbered to 49 on the...
Thank you.
I'm Sadie Hagman, and I'm here to speak against lowering the tax rate. Of course, this tax cut will affect all essential workers in Lynchburg, but without the teachers, we wouldn't have these essential workers in the first place. Doctors, nurses, firefighters, and others all circle back to education, especially in elementary through high school. This tax cut will also affect public facilities and projects such as libraries, construction work, parks, water and sewer systems, and even small downgrades within these can make a world of a difference. It will affect custodial staff and administrative staff in the schools as well. While it is a difficult matter, the well-being of our city as a whole is arguably more important than personal expenses, and keep in mind that most taxes go towards the enrichment of our city through arts and education. First, I spoke to my teachers and asked them what they thought. "I think it hurts our community," Michael Potts said, "and I think our community will crumble if we don't start investing in our parks and schools." He would rather pay a small amount than take away resources from the citizens of Lynchburg. "I'm also tired of training five to six new teachers every year because people don't see it as worth it anymore," he added. I talked to Manny Linehan too, an English teacher who was present at the previous meeting. She was against lowering the tax rate as well, saying that it would hurt school funding and teachers. She also noted that this preposition was illegal and/or improper procedure in the first place. As the board did not take time for the opinions of constituents, it did not truly make a final vote. As you can see, my teachers agree on this, and I'm sure teachers all throughout Lynchburg do too. They put in tons of effort and money to get grants, buy supplies, coach extracurriculars, and make students feel safe and appreciated, and we are able to make them feel appreciated too by paying them what they're worth. With this tax cut, educators' salaries would be affected greatly, and as a citizen of Lynchburg, I don't think we should allow that to happen. While it would be comfortable and more desirable for some citizens, even a slight lowering of the tax rate would negatively affect the ones who run our city and keep it alive, the essential workers. We have the power to not let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kalen Snyder was the last young adult that I had on the list, but I think she wanted to defer to her regular slot, just to make sure that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just now we're on...
Yep, so now we're good with number four.
Okay. We will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter. Beth White.
I've got to say, that was pretty cool to see the kids come up and speak. I'd rather hear them than some adults. Beth White, Ward 3. Madam Mayor, members of council, over the past four months, we have heard plenty of discussions about the proposed 89 cent tax rate, how it will be great for our city and produce $12.3 million in new revenue. Last Tuesday at the budget meeting, all seven members of council agreed that all parts of the public safety package can be paid for and therefore won't be cut. After all, we will have $12.3 million in new revenue. Well, will we? You see, something that I think you have forgotten about is this thing that we all suffer with called inflation. Two years ago, it cost my husband and I $400 per month to get groceries. Now it costs between $1,000 and $1,200 a month for those same groceries. Right now, the cost of inflation is either 5% or 5.5%, depending upon which website you look at for Virginia. The same rising prices that we all have to pay as citizens also affect city services. As Mr. Patrick stated on Tuesday, it's going to cost an additional $12.1 million to cover inflationary costs for current city services. Now, I don't do math that often. I do it as part of my job, but I didn't like it at school, but $12.3 million minus $12.1 million leaves $200,000. job, but I didn't like it at school. But 12.3 million minus 12.1 million leaves $200,000. So if the public safety package isn't going to be cut at all, that's going to cost more than $200,000. How do you plan on paying for it? Let's look at the sheriff's office for a moment. I served on jury duty for the entire month of March with Circuit Court, and I was there seven times. According to Mr. Swisher, who is the court clerk, there is a significant rise in jury trials due to the COVID backlog right now. Per Sheriff Sloan, 65% of the department has to provide court services, which leaves only 35% to do the work of the other 65%. Now, I don't know if you've ever served in a church, but I have. There's a common saying, 20% of the people do 80% of the work. So 20% of the people get burned out from exhaustion and covering 80% of the work. What happens? They leave and they go elsewhere to serve where they're not getting burned out. What do you think's going to happen to 35% of the sheriff's department if they continue to carry 65% of the work? My final point is the city's IT department. Mr. Bender has requested one additional IT person to help maintain the city computers. If you remember the problem in Baltimore, there are 186 people to manage all of those computers, and yet they were the victims of a crippling cyber attack. We have one person to manage 1,200 computers. According to a recent IT security training, a cybercrime takes place every 36 seconds. So with your 89 cent tax rate, you're putting your city at risk every time that person needs to just take a bathroom break. By the way, at the end of my allotted three minutes, there have been four cyberattacks committed. So if your 89 cent tax rate's going to result in city services being cut, people being fired, deputies leaving due to burnout, and the city at the risk of being crippled by cyberattacks. Great job, team.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now hear from Robert Brennan, followed by Rodney Hubbard, and then Jennifer Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Reed, distinguished members of the city council. My name is Robert Brennan. I'm a member of Lynchburg City School Board, and I'm here tonight to support the LCS budget for 2024. The 1550 budget proposal is centered on the idea of recruiting and retaining our teachers and our support staff. There are mainly two initiatives. The first is a $15 per hour minimum wage for bus drivers, custodians, and other support staff. Initiative number two is an increase in the starting salary for teachers from $43,500 to $50,000. The current LCS starting salary is less than the starting salaries in Amherst, Appomattox, and Campbell Counties, and lower than the starting salaries in Roanoke, Danville, and Harrisonburg. In addition, by the end of last year, 28% of LCS teachers resigned either to move to another school district, start another career, or retire. That, the repercussions of that loss are still felt today, and that currently there are 52 teaching vacancies in our elementary, middle, and high school, and there are 18 vacancies for bus drivers. If we want the best teachers to deliver excellence in our classrooms, we need to be competitive. Over the past several months, there's been a variety of methods considered by city council to determine the annual funding of LCS, including a funding formula, more recently the suggestion to use standards of quality or categorical funding. The standards of quality is a misnomer, and that they have nothing to do with the quality of education, but rather set a minimum for staffing requirements in public schools. Currently, the SOQ funding provides for 60% of our elementary school teachers, leaving 40% or 90% of our 232 elementary teachers not funded. Thus, using SOQ funding for addressing teacher salary is a race to the bottom by, in recruiting and retaining our teachers. My request tonight is to, is for you to be diligent and deliberate in determining a method to fund LCS. Whatever you decide will have reaching implications for our staff and our students. It took the city of Norfolk several years of hard work to accomplish a funding formula. During a work session last week, your staff stated they were not able to identify a school district in Virginia that uses categorized funding. We do not want to be an example of a failed experiment. Please direct your capable city manager and chief financial officer to work with LCS to investigate the pros and cons of all options for you to consider in making a deliberate and educated decision. Let's get it right and not just get it done. Dr. Roger Jones, a respected educator in town, often states that every child has a gift, and is responsible to the schools to find that gift and bring it to fruition. Please partner with LCS in funding and empowering our teachers and support staff to find that gift in every child, and doing so, make our schools great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Rodney Hubbard, and then Jennifer Williams, followed by Kristin Prozen.
Good evening, city council members. I'm a group of WLLL AM 930 radio station. And my, my issue that I have right now is that I listen to your motto, citizens first. Alright. So what about the elderly citizens? Have we forgot about them? Doesn't cross your mind? Not in the budget? What about elderly abuse and crimes in nursing homes? We don't think about them anymore? We just worry about giving teachers a pay raise? We just worry about cocaine and drugs on the streets and gang, gang? What about the gangs in the nursing homes? My father helped you, helped you, and helped you get up where you are. Which one of y'all went to Guggenheim Nursing Home to see him? Which one? Let me show you what happened to him. This is his bed sore February the 8th. Okay, February 8th. February 8th. Guggenheim Nursing. I lost two family members in nursing home. This is his bed sore March the 28th. Can't really see what it is because it's so dark, but it's a hole in the back of his behind, that you put a baseball in there. Put a baseball in there. Okay. And who's watching the nursing homes? Who's hiring social service people? Manager? You know how Elder Hubbard got into the nursing home? Because this man hired some guy down at the social service offices, and he hired some other guys, and they came and interrupted our family because they thought it was an emergency that he needed protection. My dad, he needed protection from us. So the best interest of him was to give him to the social service and put him in Guggenheim Nursing Home. So 30 days later, this is what you get. This is what I have to live with for the rest of my life. This is what I got to deal with. And if you guys can't put a budget or something in the, in the, in the, in the budget for elderly abuse, okay, and watch out for our family members that get old, and they can't do what they used to do, instead of just throwing them in a nursing home, why not put a budget in to help people come into the home so that they, the last few of their days, they ease out? Not morphine out. They gave my dad morphine and told our family that this was healing. This is healing. And they kicked me out of the nursing home. I got a charge. I got a trespassing charge. On the day my dad died, how do you think I feel? How do you think I got to talk to my listeners now? For WLLL, what do I have to say to them? That the city council members, they don't care about elderly people anymore? And that's a fact, because y'all ain't putting nothing in the budget. So I'm asking the city council members today, that you go home and you figure out how to wait to stop these crimes in these nursing homes, because it's only going to get worse if you don't make a decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Mayor? House Missions?
According to the rules of procedure, we are allowed to, um, put something on agenda for a future council meeting by majority vote. And what I would motion is that we will subpoena the records involving social services, and if it has to be in a closed session, I'm okay with that. But we will subpoena the records and begin investigating what, what this man went through. That's my motion.
Do you want us to get consensus vote to look into it? Okay, we'll just do a consensus vote to do that.
Okay, so a date to put that on the agenda for, do we need to put it, do we need to have a date for that?
I guess we have 9th and 2nd, 23rd. So let me see what, I'll follow up, see what how blue this is, what, what the information is. So I propose the 9th now, and if we need more time, we'll come back on the 23rd.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Jennifer Williams. Followed by Kristin Prozen and Elizabeth Short.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, who's not here, and council members. My name is Jennifer Williams, and I'm a resident of Lynchburg. I'm here to speak in favor of funding the 1550 plan for Lynchburg City Schools. This plan, which has been improved by the school board, is critical for LCS to maintain and improve its high academic standards. With teacher wages the second lowest in the state and shortages nationwide, it is harder than ever for LCS to retain and recruit caring and experienced people. According to the Learning Policy Institute, across the country, teacher shortages in hard-to-staff subjects, math, science, special education, and bilingual education continue to be widespread and severe. Studies show that high teacher turnover results in decreased student achievement, unequal opportunities to learn, and reduces teacher effectiveness. High turnover rates are also very expensive. It can cost a district over $20,000 in expenses related to separation, recruitment, hiring, and training for each new hire. It is important to remember that teachers do not work in a vacuum. It takes the effort of the entire school community to ensure each child receives the support needed to succeed academically and socially. Bus drivers, nutrition workers, janitors, reading specialists, theater teachers, as well as administration and all the rest are cogs in the wheel that allows LCS to run smoothly and serve its students and families effectively. Each person deserves to be paid a competitive wage, not just SOQ positions. Just this year, one of my son's classes had three different teachers. The first quit in the middle of the first semester and was replaced with a long-term substitute, who was replaced by another teacher. How much instruction did this class alone lose as a result of this turnover, and how much did it cost the city? The economic opportunities that have been created in Lynchburg over the past 10 years are drawing young families to the city. It has been said before, but I feel it is important to reiterate that the very first thing parents look for when moving to a new area is the quality of the schools. They look to see that the city is investing in the school system, and that in addition to high academic standards, their children's will, their children will have qualified special education teachers if needed, playgrounds, clean schools, counseling support, safe and timely transportation, and numerous enrichment opportunities. Not funding the 1550 plan is shortsighted and fiscally irresponsible. LCS will see higher rates of teacher and staff loss without hope of attracting experienced and qualified replacements. Standardized test scores, graduation rates, and school ratings will suffer. New families will choose to move to somewhere else, and established families will begin leaving the city. I ask that you keep your promise to support the teachers and fund the 1550 plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Prozen. Followed by Elizabeth Short and Sam Coleman.
Hi, I am here to express my dissent to lower the tax rate to 89 cents and the subsequent budget cuts that it would involve. I live in Lynchburg. I really love it. I've been here for about five years. I moved here from a larger city in Florida, and I've started a small business here, and I've learned a lot, and I've grown. I've become involved in the small business community through the Office of Economic Development and the Small SBDC. I love the resources that this city offers, and it's really just been a wonderful place to live and to grow and to be part of a community. I've always felt incredibly valued here as well. And so it's actually incredibly startling that with an 89 cent proposed budget or tax cut, you are not only able to compromise what makes, makes Lynchburg a great place to live, but also a great place to start a business. This tax rate also suggests cutting the resources and services that make this city in general a really great place to live and grow, as well as cutting support for the efficient functioning of the city and the education of Lynchburg's youth and those who serve the youth. And in a way, you are literally defunding health, happiness, and wellness community, and ultimately, what wants to grow in Lynchburg. And I would like to close by reminding you and council that regardless of personal political ideology, you are elected officials here, and you are here to tend to the needs of the community as a whole, and this proposal significantly diminishes the quality of life and wellness of Lynchburg citizens, nor does it reflect the needs of the community at large or support an image of Lynchburg as a valuable place for small businesses or large businesses to invest. So it can be done at 101, so keep our city our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth Short, followed by Sam Coleman and Andrew Napierkowski.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Short and have been teaching public schools in middle school English for 13 years. Eight of those have been in Lynchburg. In that time, my paycheck has increased a total of $90 after taxes. When I arrived in Lynchburg, my salary was tight but was manageable. I was able to purchase items for kids who would come to me without adequate materials. I expected some behavioral issues and was prepared for students with learning challenges. Today, we see children with unprecedented barriers to learning, students transitioning to foster care, homelessness, and those who have faced traumas our generation never conceived of. Eight years ago, we had fire and tornado drills. Today, we have active shooter and lockdown drills. We have had to differentiate between a lockdown and a lockout. We have kept children calm through lockouts that have lasted well over an hour. Eight years ago, we helped students navigate friendship crises. Now we help students survive loss of friends due to gun violence, children whose only safe place to sleep is in the classroom. We buy food to keep our desks, to keep in our desks for those who can't eat otherwise. We purchase clothing for children who need it. We help students with mental illness who are selectively mute and others who scream through our hallways. We are expected to break up fights and safely empty classrooms under threat. On several occasions, I have stood between my children and a student with a chair. I have stood between my children with, and a student with scissors. I had stitches after a student punched me and his knuckle went through my upper lip. Parents cuss us out because we are tired, because they are tired of being called about behavioral issues, or because they don't like their child's grades. We are maligned by members of city council who tell us that we offer Happy Meals at filet mignon prices. Even though we have, even though you have yet to step into our schools, our hallways, much less spend time in our classrooms. You want us to teach in buildings that leak with HVAC systems that don't work half the time, overcrowded classrooms, and then demand our children pass a standardized test? You tell us that we aren't performing well enough to warrant more money, yet you won't give us the money to create a safe environment where everyone can learn and be successful. Teachers are leaving Lynchburg City Schools at an alarming rate. In my school alone, we have lost 14 teachers this year. I am one of three English teachers who will remain at Linkhorn Middle School. Being one of the lowest-paying districts in Virginia, finding replacements in an evaporating candidate poll is nearly impossible.
Thank you, ma'am. Sam Coleman, followed by Andrew Napierkowski and Brooke Andrews.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and honorable members of the city council. My name is Sam Coleman, and I am a resident of the city of Lynchburg. And I also have the privilege of serving as the chief academic officer for Lynchburg City Schools. My comments tonight are about our school system, about our students, about many of our educators and faculty members who are here right now after working an extremely long day, because we believe that a municipality's commitment and an investment in its public schools pays present and future dividends in the forms of safer communities, thriving and competitive workforce, and the dignity of those who serve and dedicate their lives to educating Lynchburg's most precious assets, which are the young people who will inherit and contribute to the city that we create for them. You have heard over the past several days, and will continue to hear from faculty members, students, parents, and community members who voiced their support of Lynchburg City Schools 1550 plan. In order to achieve that plan, our schools need real and tangible investments. We need support from the city council. Our schools need investments that allow us to meet the current needs, many of which you just heard about expressed by one of our teachers from Linkhorn Middle School, in educating today's young people and preparing them for a future to thrive. As Delegate Vier shared in her open remarks today, that our voices need to be heard- As Delegate Byer shared in her open remarks today, that our voices need to be heard when tough decisions are made. Our voices will continue to be heard tonight and have been heard, and as the tough decision is made, we ask that your vote honors what you hear from us. The majority of the people who are participating in this forum ask to be heard that you would support the fifteen fifty plan. It is not uncommon across our country for many elected bodies to hear from the public that they swear to serve in forums such as these and do the exact opposite of what they've heard. We ask that that is not the experience that we endure from this city council, because that's not the idea of democracy that the residents of Lynchburg expect from our local government. Our expectations for being heard do not end after Election Day, and they certainly don't end after campaigns are over. Our expectations are to be heard in forums such as this one, and that our voices matter when you make decisions. So, I ask on behalf of our teachers, our students, our community members, that you would support the fifteen fifty plan by working with Lynchburg City Schools to develop a formula that makes that goal a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Andrew Napierkowski, followed by Brooke Andrews and Jen Staden.
My name is Andrew Napierkowski. I've been a math teacher for LCS for the last ten years. As we enter the academic hiring season, I'm asking you to support the LCS fifteen fifty plan. I understand many of your concerns. As a fiscal conservative myself, I'm all about lower taxes and cutting waste. However, I'm also about providing quality service, and I strongly urge you to support LCS's ability to keep and recruit talent now during these crucial hiring months. We can't continue to lag behind the counties when it comes to pay. In twenty-eighteen, I was named the LCS Teacher of the Year. I am the current Math Chair at Heritage High School, and my LCL scores typically exceed the state averages. I say this not to brag, but to hope that I'm a teacher you wouldn't want to lose. But you lost me last year. After you rejected the eight percent increase last year, I looked elsewhere, and neighboring district offered to pay eight thousand dollars more than I was making at LCS. For various reasons, many personal, and because of the great staff at LCS, I ended up staying and rejecting the offer. But most teachers wouldn't be able to make that choice. In fact, I've even given teachers over five hundred dollars of my own money in order to support them this year. In the last month, several teachers mentioned that they were applying to surrounding districts due to better pay. Even at a recent IEP meeting I attended in a county district for my own daughter, many of the personnel were former LCS employees. A common reason for their move was pay. In a recent letter, you talked about setting goals and running agencies more like the private sector. Honestly, I agree with you. However, you miss the other side of the equation. The private sector has to focus on attracting the right people. Even if you look at the private sector in this own community, Centra, one of Lynchburg's largest employers, is offering raises up to seven percent this spring, and they plan on making market adjustments again this fall. Why? Because they couldn't attract and keep nurses when the surrounding area is paid more. Like the private sector, your goals are largely meaningless if you don't have the right personnel. I'm asking you not to hobble next school year already by allowing surrounding areas to steal our talent and attract new graduates with better pay. I have two little ones, and thankfully, because of my wife's job, just bought our first home. Our number-one priority when buying was the school district. If you want to attract families to live within city limits, you can do so with lower taxes, jobs, et cetera, but one of the best incentives is quality schools. To have quality schools, you need the right personnel. I encourage you to work with LCS Board over the next year and see what you can cut, but for now, please support the fifteen fifty plan during this important hiring season, before it's too late. Much like a sports team, you can't achieve your goals if you can't attract and keep the right people. And for LCS and any school division, the time to attract and keep them is now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brooke Andrews, followed by Jen Staden and James Coleman.
My name is Brooke Andrews, and I live in Lynchburg City. I'm about to finish my eighth year of teaching fifth grade for Lynchburg City Schools, and I absolutely love being a teacher. The points that I'm speaking on tonight come only from my heart and what I've spent on my mind regarding hourly and salary increase, and why I believe Lynchburg City Schools faculty deserve to see an increase of pay. I first wanted to say that the job of being a teacher does not start or end at the times that are stated in our contracts. A teacher's job goes into the early mornings and late into the evenings and weekends. There are meetings in the morning that have to be conducted before eight fifteen, and there have been several afternoons where school staff have stayed well past three forty-five, waiting for students to get onto their bus if it is late. There are countless amounts of hours that go into creating lesson plans and assessments, preparing for those lessons, and grading. Another reason we deserve an increase is because of inflation. I know everyone has been impacted. I have no idea how the teachers and staff that we have at our schools, who may be single parents or live independently, make ends meet. I have personally spoken to multiple staff at my school who have side jobs to help cover their basic life expenses. I know teachers that have worked the before-after-school tutoring program and worked summer school to make extra money. Although these programs benefit the students, teachers should be signing up because they want to help our students and not because they need the extra money, which leads me to my next point. The teacher burnout and turnover rate is higher than I have ever seen since I first started teaching. I do believe that it is important to find ways to get new first-year teachers to join LCS. However, what about the teachers, the bus drivers, custodians, instructional assistants, and cafeteria teams who have been teaching and working for ten, twenty, and even thirty-plus years? What can be done to make them feel appreciated for their dedication to serving the children in our community? There are other jobs that offer competitive pay, and soon, I am afraid that the dedicated, hard-working staff we do have at LCS will leave to go find someplace else to work if they have not done so already. To close, I just want everyone to take a moment to reflect on schools in America currently. There have been devastating, heartbreaking situations on the news within the past year that should have everyone reflecting on what we can do to make Lynchburg City Schools a better place for our children and staff. Everyone who is involved in the education system takes a huge risk each day just to be there. It takes a village to successfully reach our students in our community. We are a team, and we need everyone involved to be successful. I am asking for the city council members to consider implementing the fifteen fifty plan so the faculty and staff of Lynchburg City Schools knows that their hard work is appreciated and seen and will be rewarded. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jen Staden, Staden. Followed by James Coleman and Allison Daughtry.
Good evening, council members. Jen Staden, Lynchburg City resident. I'm a 2019 participant of the Lynchburg City Citizens Academy. Doing that program led me to feel confident as a citizen when I am in positions like these, where I'm trying to understand the budgets and the needs of every department. Now, I have made sure that I'm up to date on local government and that I stay engaged, and that's why I'm here tonight. I've been listening to the vague ideas from council members on ways Lynchburg could save money for weeks. One of the themes that I have noticed is the idea that there could be more partnerships with businesses and nonprofits to cover some of the things that some council members deem as extra. I would like to tell you about some of the ways that my husband and I currently spend our free time. I serve on the Board of Directors for Instation Theater Company. I am thrilled that Instation is able to partner with Lynchburg City Schools to bring performances into the schools, and to partner with Lynchburg Parks and Rec to perform site-specific plays in our public parks. I'm also a volunteer at Camp Kumbaya. This morning, I spent three hours there helping with the field trip for Hutcheson Early Learning Center. One child screamed and said she had never been in the woods before. It was magical to be with her in that moment when her fear melted. My husband has been a part of the engineering mentoring program through Partners in Education for over twenty years. He has mentored hundreds of kids to help them decide if going into engineering would be a good fit for them. He has written college recommendation letters and welcomed many of those students home after college as they began their careers as local engineers. Michael also serves on the Board of the Greater Lynchburg Off-Road Cycling and is a coach with the Youth Mountain Biking Program. They partner with Parks and Recreation to build and maintain all of the mountain biking trails at Peekspoo Park, which is also where the youth team practices. This team has grown to over fifty athletes. These kids spend six to ten hours a week out in the woods, riding bikes, getting dirty, and getting strong. None of these amazing partnerships could happen without the correct support staff within Lynchburg City Schools, Parks and Recreation, and Lynchburg City Government Offices. The Department of Equity and Community Engagement for LCS does an exceptional job of coordinating things like mentoring program and nonprofits to provide free extras for students. Without Parks and Recreation staff, local nonprofits wouldn't be able to help maintain trails or put on plays in the middle of a park. While it is easy to say, "Let the community pick up the slack," that thought process overlooks that we can't do it without the support of the incredible LCS and Lynchburg City employees. If there is a drastic reduction to personal property tax rates as proposed, then there won't be people to work with businesses, nonprofits, and community members to coordinate these efforts and make sure that they are executed safely and appropriately. For the sake of keeping all of these great partnerships to make Lynchburg a great place to live, work, play, and volunteer thriving, I'm asking you to please go with the budget as proposed by the experts in our city manager's office. Thank you, council.
Thank you. James Coleman, followed by Allison Daughtry and David Lee.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I am reminded of the late, great Benjamin Elijah Mays, who once said in times of challenge, "We only have a minute, a tiny minute, to serve, and must give an account for our minute if we abuse it." In this challenged minute with proposed cuts, I'm thinking of a car getting ready to go over the edge of a cliff. In this situation, it doesn't matter if you're in the front seat, the back seat, or the trunk. We all go down together when it goes over the edge of the cliff. Therefore, I stand to lift my voice in support of city services that are provided by law enforcement. I stand in support of health-related agencies. That's why I have my shirt on, a program and Jubilee to help citizens' health. I stand in support of the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, who has been a tireless advocate for improving the quality of education, quality of life, and workforce development in our city. Don't cut them. And lastly, I stand in support of Lynchburg City Schools. You asked for a budget with no fluff, a teacher-friendly, low-wage, employee-friendly budget. We have given you what you asked for. Why now the pushback? You've heard from our professionals. We must be able to maintain and recruit quality staff. Our test scores cannot be expected to improve if we have to rely on the necessary engagement of substitutes on a regular basis for any number of reasons. Council, please put our citizens' money where your mouth is and support our LCS fifteen fifty plan as LCL helps keep the city-sized car. We must all ride in from falling off of the edge of the cliff.
Thank you. Allison Daughtry, David Lee, and Judy Lee. Allison's not here? Okay. David Lee?
My name is David Lee, and I am a married homeowner in Lynchburg City with two children in the Lynchburg City School System. A proud graduate of EC Glass, Lynchburg City Schools gave me the tools to succeed as a television editor in the competitive marketplace of New York City. There was neither my wife's nor my plan to return to my hometown. We witnessed this community's incredible progress from afar, including the opening of our vibrant Academy Arts Center and rejuvenated downtown. We must protect this progress through continued investment, both private and public. Partly due to this process, Lynchburg has a robust housing market that has seen property values rise. Though it is inconvenient for homeowners like me to endure a commensurate rise in our property tax bills, this change reflects an aggregate gain in the value of our holdings and is therefore a good problem to have. Even good problems deserve solutions, and City Manager Benda has endorsed a tax cut from the previous one dollar and eleven cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value to one dollars and five cents. However, our newly-elected council majority has declined this cut in favor of the more aggressive eighty-nine cent rate that accounting for inflation does not cover the same levels of service provided by our 2023 budget. To have the freshman city council majority disregard the expertise of its city manager is not a good problem to have. Attending our city schools, I learned enough civics to know that the breakdown of democratic norms, including the intentional exclusion of minority council members and their constituents during this process, is not a good problem to have. Risking our city's vital services and wagering future prosperity against a money grab for a relatively affluent constituency is also not a good problem to have. A robust public school system is the backbone of our city's economy and the surest way to protect the rights and potential of our most vulnerable citizens. In practical terms, our teachers are the lowest-paid in the region. Our family has witnessed of a loved science teacher departing after one year for a more competitive offer outside of the city. My son has also experienced the disruption of another teacher, also science, leaving mid-year, a change that had a measurable impact on his and the class's collective performance. Due to shortages of drivers, my daughter's bus stop, once teeming with kids, has lost no fewer than five children to alternate ride-sharing arrangements. Parents' jobs and, therefore, our city economy depend on reliable public school transportation. Further reductions for a system that is already struggling to provide basic services is not a good problem to have. Failing to invest in our city and school system will lead to a vicious cycle of degradation and attrition, hobbling our community for years, if not decades to come. I trust our newly-elected council members to recognize and solve this very serious problem—
Thank you.
—by accepting our city manager Benda's proposed budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Lee, then Rachel Gagan and Luisa Avarado.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Since Lynchburg has a city council, city manager, form of local government, this combines the political leadership of our seven elected city council members with the strong managerial experience of our appointed city manager, Winter Benda, along with other hired officials. City council members, as you know, your mission is to deliver city services to Lynchburg residents, workers, and visitors in an efficient, effective, and equitable manner, thus building an ever-stronger community. This requires working hand in hand with each other, along with collaborating with our hired officials. This includes honoring the following city council values: open communication, personal responsibility, integrity, and customer focus. From practically day one of the current city council's existence, a subgroup of new council members sometimes appears to be trying to control this decision-making, leaving the experienced council members and hired personnel out of the process. Without consulting the two experienced city council members—or Winter Benda—or the people in the city, this subgroup of council members collaborated among themselves to write, quote, "an ordinance recommending a decrease in the city's real estate tax rate from the current one dollar eleven cents per hundred dollars of assessed real estate value to a rate of eighty-nine cents per hundred dollars of assessed real estate value." They intended for this ordinance to become effective on July 1st, 2023, and remain in place until otherwise changed by council. To quote a prominent citizen from the news in advance, quote, "They had already made plans about what the city's real estate tax rate was going to be without consulting the other two city council members, or the city manager, or the city itself." The person added, "I still want to encourage people to have a voice." The person added, "I still want to encourage people to have a voice. The purpose of the real estate tax money is to establish and maintain Lynchburg's public schools. Reducing the city's real estate tax rate..."
Thank you very much.
"...will undermine the school system."
Thank you very much.
And I thank you. Members of city council, this is an important issue. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Rachel Ga- Gagin?
Gagin.
Gagin, okay, sorry. Luisa Avarado, and then Jan Willinger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Rachel Gagin. I am here as the president of Live Healthy Lynchburg, your community health organization, named in the latest revision of the Lynchburg Plan as an advisor to council regarding health policy and programs. I'm also a 16-year tax-paying resident of Ward 1 Lynchburg City, a small business owner, and the parent of two Lynchburg City School students, now both at EC Glass. I have used my expertise as a trained pediatrician to serve on the LCS Health Advisory Board for the past 10 years. Live Healthy Lynchburg began in 2010 to address health concerns in our communities, our workplaces, and our schools. Over the last 13 years, LHL has advised the city on the green streets policy, healthy eating initiatives, and vaping policy. Most recently, I have spoken to council about walkability in our community with sidewalks for both health and safety reasons. Today, I'm here to address how proposed tax cuts and a new budget will negatively impact the overall health and well-being of our community. First, as you've already heard, successful schools are fundamental to the health and safety of any community. City Council's proposed budget provides less than half the funding requested by LCS. In communities without strong support for public education, research shows multiple negative consequences. High school dropouts are eight times more likely to go to jail, Councilman Helgeson. High school dropouts are more likely to have mental health disorders and to become addicted to alcohol and illicit drugs, Councilman Taylor. High school dropouts are seven times more likely to live in poverty, Councilman Missions, and cost the community more in public health and social support, Madam Mayor, not to mention lost tax revenue. Criminals do not pay taxes. Our police department has forged fantastic partnerships with our schools, and just as LPD provides resource officers to keep our students safe, LCS can actually help LPD by decreasing the dropout rate if they are fully funded. LCS is the mechanism that will provide future ambulance drivers, cab drivers, grocery clerks, respiratory and physical therapists, teachers, nurses, doctors, policemen. The proposed budget by you will limit essential human services in Lynchburg. For years, LCS has done less with, excuse me, has done more with less, but now LCS needs more, not less. Second, the proposed city budget will directly threaten the health of our students while in school. Currently, each school only has one nurse, who might serve 250 students at Deerington, or 1,100 students at Heritage, or 1,400 students at Glass, one nurse. Recently, I spoke personally with the parents of a child with a very common and straightforward chronic illness, who changed their child mid-year to virtual school out of safety concerns that the single nurse could not handle their child's basic medical needs. LCS needs more, not less. LCS is currently understaffed to adequately accommodate students with IEPs and 504s. As you've heard, it's difficult to attract with these mediocre salaries, and competitive pay has led to significant turnover. One math class at Glass has had three different teachers this year and is now only taught virtually. LCS has been struggling with bus drivers for years, and because of zoning, inadequate sidewalks, and safety concerns, this has translated to many students being forced to tolerate bus rides of longer than an hour in poorly ventilated vehicles without adequate supervision, and it is critical that our children get to school safely. LCS needs more, not less. Third, study after study shows American youth are in crisis, facing unprecedented mental health challenges. Since COVID, I personally have seen more kids with severe depression than ever before in my 16 years. We don't have enough therapists in the community to meet these needs. Our schools try to fill the gap, yet LCS still only has one counselor for every 500 students, while the Commonwealth recommends one for every 250. I spend a significant time, amount of my time diagnosing and treating mental health problems in adolescents. Almost every week, I talk to a suicidal teen, and I don't know how to be more clear with you tonight. If you cut the LCS budget, the homicide and suicide rates will go up. Our children deserve more, not less. I'm also here to represent families. Our nationally-recognized Parks and Recreation Department is a major attractor. I moved here after one walk on the Blackwater Creek Trail. More than that, our parks and trails provide health options for citizens with high blood pressure, high cholesterol, heart and lung disease. When we think about personal health, we all know about small daily decisions that we make to eat well and stay active that add up to long-term benefits. Community health is the same. No one citizen can afford to build their own park, sidewalk, or route, bus, or have a police department, and we all contribute in small, reoccurring ways through tax dollars to gigantic projects that benefit us all. I respectfully request that you reconsider the drastic cuts you proposed, work together with staff to create a budget that is fiscally sound and funds the needs of our community, especially our children.
Thank you very much. Luisa Avarado, and then Jan Willinger and Mary Normile.
Good evening. My name is Luisa Avarado. I am a Lynchburg resident. Unfortunately, on April 4, I was not able to stay for the public comments to give my support to the budget proposed by our city manager, which establishes the real estate tax rate at 105 per 100 assessed value. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I'm here to voice my concern about the recent vote to cut the real estate tax rate by 22 cents. This decision by city council seems to have been pushed through with little regard to procedure, due diligence, and community input. Our community leaders, in particularly Public Works, Public Safety, and our city schools, have each gone through their own planning processes to foresee their needs and wants for next year. They count on our city to maintain their financial commitments and fund critical projects to serve our community. The vote to change the tax rate to 89 cents seems rushed, arbitrary, and undermines these efforts. As an LCS parent and an instructional aide for students in remuneration, I am particularly interested in seeing our city continue to invest in our youth. Lynchburg City School needs strong community support and funding to carry out its educational objectives. Our schools ought to attract, maintain, and develop quality professionals and supporting personnel. They ought to be able to have enough supplies, maintain infrastructure, and obtain instructional resources that offer innovative and adequate instruction for our students. They ought to foster a safer environment for our students with access to mental health and youth-trained police resources. Recently, our school board took a stand supporting Lynchburg City Schools 1550 initiative to align the salaries of teachers and supporting staff to be more competitive and similar to those in nearby districts. I applaud this alignment. It is my hope that City of Lynchburg, the city council, has an open and honest conversation about this initiative. For those coworkers holding second jobs because the Lynchburg City School's salary barely covers rent, it would mean the encouragement they need to remain in our districts and keep the job they truly enjoy. Too many of our aides, bus drivers, custodians, and other supporting personnel simply cannot afford to return year to year. Many of our schools experience...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Jan Willinger, and then Mary Normile and Bert Lachlan.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jan Willinger, and I live in Ward 1. I want to speak about the impact of an 89-cent real estate tax rate for those people who rent. To begin with, renters will get no economic impact from subsidy that doesn't apply to them, so right off the bat, 52% of our residents who are renters save no money. But what about the other budget modifications? How about the motor vehicle license fee waiver and 10% reduction in personal property tax for cars? That's great for renters who own cars, but it's also likely that those who don't rent cars, those who depend on our public transportation, that those folks are renters. What about waiving refuse collection fees? Again, $240 savings for those who rent houses or small buildings, but for our neighbors who live in apartments that are larger, those complexes contract trash pickup, so they won't see any savings there either. I'm not seeing much economic relief for those who rent, and that means ignoring over half of our residents. Now, let's look at the proposed expenditures, especially the critical increases in public safety and quality of life that could be funded with $1.05 as the tax rate. Will additional funding for police and fire departments help renters? Yeah, those services help everyone. Will additional resources for the sheriff's office, Commonwealth attorney, and infrastructure help renters? Again, yes. What about increasing teachers' salaries? Would that impact renters? Sure enough, since most people who rent send their children to our public schools. Lastly, let's consider the additional investment in the parks and trail systems and a housing toolkit that will increase housing options, address derelict buildings, and revitalize neighborhoods. That seems especially well-suited for our neighbors who rent. The bottom line is it's clear that 52% of our friends who rent could receive very little economic impact from reducing the tax rate to 89 cents, but almost every renter would benefit from the increased expenditures with a tax rate of $1.05. Even better, the $1.05 tax rate allows homeowners to benefit from the same improved services, which means all Lynchburg residents would enjoy enhanced public safety, competitively-paid school staff, and enriched quality of life. That sounds like a win-win. And I recognize that everybody in city council owns a home, and some even own rental properties. I get that. I'm a homeowner too, but I don't vote on what's best for me. I vote on what's best for our city, and this city includes homeowners and renters. I'm asking you to look what's, to look beyond what's in your personal interest and the interest of those in your circle of friends, and look at what's, vote on what's best for the city. Please consider the $1.05 tax rate for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Normile, then Bert Lachlan and Megan Huffman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Mary Normile, and I'm a citizen residing in Ward 4. My husband and I moved to Lynchburg in the summer of 1986 from Charlottesville. Why? Because we were told that Lynchburg is a great place to raise a family, and it has indeed been a great place to raise a family. Why? Largely because of the excellent public schools available to us. Our two children were enrolled K through 12 in LCS and had extraordinary academic experiences as well as enriching, challenging, and engaging opportunities in sports, arts, and leadership. During our time in Lynchburg, we've seen whether the leadership came from the Democrats, the Republicans, or independents, strategic investment in our community. As many have commented, our downtown has become radically transformed because of the vision and investment made in our community. Our parks and trail systems, as well as our museums and old city cemetery, have evolved into being some of the best in the Commonwealth because of the vision and investment made in our community. The arts are thriving in Lynchburg. The Academy, Commerce Street, N Station, and Renaissance Theater groups, as well as the extraordinary theater and music programs at Heritage, Glass, and our colleges and universities because of the vision and investment in our community. We have a talented and effective economic development team and strong partnerships with the Regional Alliance and a wide range of economically viable businesses and industries. Our nonprofit organizations are varied, unique, and nationally-recognized. Our unemployment rate is about 3%, about the same as the full Commonwealth of Virginia. Why do we have such a strong economic base in Lynchburg? Because of the vision and investment in our community. My point? We are the community we are today because of vision and investment. While we, while we, while we still have much to do, we can see the evidence of prosperity because of these investments. We cannot cut our way to prosperity. I am quite concerned that the impact of this drastic reduction in the real estate tax will lead to the inevitable and significant budget cuts to our schools and city services and will hurt the citizens of Lynchburg who are the most vulnerable. So I have three requests. Trust the experts. We are fortunate to have the expertise of Mr. Benda, Dr. Edwards, and others. Council members, especially those of you who are new to your positions, you do not have the expertise to budget by category. Accept the proposed budget presented by our city manager and full allocation of LCS's requests, or negotiate a reasonable compromise. Number two, standing on the shoulders of prior leadership in Lynchburg, continue to find ways to invest, not cut, in our future prosperity. And finally, number three, learn to govern and to listen to all of the citizens you represent. While council, council has certainly gotten off to a rocky start this year, I do still have faith that you can learn to work together and work for us, your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bert Lachlan, followed by Megan Huffman and Skylar Dempsey.
Madam Mayor, Council. Bert Lachlan, from resident of Lynchburg Ward 1. I'm here to speak on the 1550 proposal, and I think we can all agree that recruitment and retention of talent is the key to a stable learning environment for our students. Failure in this area leads to issues like having to hire inexperienced teachers, increased class sizes, and cutting programs. Based on a 2019 study, there are three keys to increasing retention: compensation, support, and leadership. We have the opportunity to meet all three of those with the 1550 proposal. According to the NEA, average teacher salary in Virginia is $61,367 a year. Okay? Average teacher salary in Lynchburg, based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, is $43,235. That's a difference of $18,132 from the average in, in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I also wanted to address three specific statements that have been made by council. Unfortunately, one of the councilmen who has made some of these statements must have found the bathroom. So I guess he'll just have to watch this one. Teacher recruitment and retention, okay, absolutely has to do with salaries. I can't believe that this has to be stated publicly. Okay? But I am even more surprised that I actually found a published article about it in 2014. Matthew Hendricks performed a study in Texas that proved teacher salary is a significant indicator in recruitment and retention. Okay? Student behavior is a microcosm of what is happening in the city as a whole. If you truly feel that salary would not affect recruitment and retention, I feel you're not listening to the experts who are talking to you, who are providing you counsel. Number two, teacher salaries have been proven to directly correlate to increased English and math scores according to a peer-reviewed journal article from Garcia and Haunt last year. And number three, the argument that the school system has been too busy buying stuff rather than investing in its people. Well, city council, here's your chance to change that. But this isn't just about teachers. Instructional assistants, bus drivers, and support staff currently make the same that my 15-year-old son will at his summer job. I shouldn't have to say this, but this is inadequate to the needs of our city and our students, and we need to do better.
Thank you. Megan Huffman, followed by Skylar Dempsey and Amanda Smithson.
Good, good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Megan Huffman, and I'm a Lynchburg City resident who works in the city of Lynchburg, and I have children attending Lynchburg City Schools. I'm an active volunteer in our community, and with my job, I have the distinct privilege of collaborating with over 150 of our local nonprofit organizations and seeing the great needs of our community upfront. I'm an active parent of two different, two different Lynchburg City Schools, and I have served as PTO president. I'm a champion for our public schools and serve on the Superintendent's Advisory Council, of which I'm missing the meeting tonight to be here. I'm here tonight to advocate for Superintendent Dr. Edwards' budget plan and the 1550 Plan to increase salaries for teachers. I am here in support of city, city manager Winter Benda's proposed budget to address the increasing costs in our community and maintain city services. These individuals were hired to bring their wealth of professional knowledge and experience to the city, and to make it better, and to make it run efficiently, and to improve the lives of the citizens here. With a reckless and drastic property tax reduction to 89 cents per $100 of assessed value and immediate use of the city surplus, you are selling our future and setting us up for failure as a city. When the rubber hits the road, as we learned today during your meetings, we are now looking at more than a $2 million, a $2 million loss in the funding to our schools, loss of city accreditations and certifications, closing of the Templeton Senior Center... accreditations and certifications, closing of the Templeton Senior Center, discontinuing support of our Regional Business Alliance, reduction of city maintenance, elimination of the snow removal contract, elimination and laying off of city employee positions, among many other cuts. And we just learned that today. You cannot make the dollars and cents add up, and you cannot tell me that these cuts are improving the lives of these citizens. I would like to direct my final minutes to Councilman Larry Taylor. I appreciate your eye contact. You have looked at every single citizen that's been up here, and I appreciate that. When you signed up to be on this council, was this what you expected? Were these the cuts you anticipated? What you've gotten yourself into, Councilman Taylor, is a room dominated by bullies who have egos and personal agendas to put forth, and they're taking the city down with them in that process. Do you want to be aligned with this toxic and retaliatory rhetoric? Do you want that to be your legacy of your time on council? Mr. Taylor, it's not too late to open your eyes and your ears. You've got your eyes open, and I appreciate that. To the citizens who are writing in, calling you, showing up, we're all here because we're asking you to turn away from the bullies toward the citizens of this community who you said you'd represent. It's not too late to be the hero. Thank you.
Thank you. Skylar Dempsey, Amanda Smithson, and Joan Pence.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members. Thank you so much for your service to our city. I came tonight to speak about the budget. There are so many facets of this dollar-five budget that just really impressed me. It really knocks it out of the park, in my opinion. You know, it covers schools, it covers safety, it is funding, you know, new police positions and new public safety support staff, and the housing toolkit, you know, a wage increase for staff, and it's just, it's a really awesome budget. And I appreciate that, you know. Also, it has considered a tax cut, and, you know, there's a waiver for the refuse collection and motor vehicle license fee wave. So, you know, it benefits everybody. It's a tax cut for homeowners, it's a tax cut for renters, and I appreciate that. And I think there... I went through, and there was nothing I wanted to cut out of this budget, to be honest. It was, you know, I went through line by line, all five hundred pages, and it took a few hours. And I just, I think all of these new budget items are so important. And, you know, I would echo what everyone else said about funding the fifteen-fifty plan for LCS. I think that our teachers and support staff deserve a raise. They deserve to be valued. They deserve to, you know, to feel appreciated, and also, we need to keep them in our city instead of having them go to counties where they'll be paid more. So, I mean, that's the bottom line. Now, what I did think about, because I'm also a homeowner, and my tax assessment has gone up forty percent this year, and it's actually a lot of money out of pocket, so I thought about what could we do, and I tried to find a win-win. I think there's a way you could do it for ninety-seven cents. I think if you draw some things from general fund that would be one-time expenses, maybe the new police take-home car program, and pay for the refuse collection waiver out of the general fund, and perhaps pay for personal property tax relief out of the general fund, you're going to get maybe four point nine, almost five million dollars out of the general fund with that. If we use the debt service reserve and a couple of other savings, the vacancy savings reduction and vehicle replacement reduction, that's going to get us to about a five million dollar gap to close, and I think, you know, bring it down to ninety-seven cents, and that'll close that gap, so. And it's only a few hundred dollars more.
Thank you so much. Amanda Smithson, Joan Pence, and then Maggie Millard.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Smithson. My family and I live on John Scott Drive off Old Trent's Ferry here in Lynchburg. We have two children, both in the Lynchburg City School System. I'm here tonight because I want to address the impact of the proposed tax cuts and urge you to reconsider. In my day job, I work for the international nonprofit Save the Children. My role is public policy. I oversee the state and local policy and government relations teams here in the United States. I've worked in public policy for Save the Children for about fifteen years. For all of these years, I have traveled our country in this role and seen firsthand the impact of underfunding the public services. I wish you could come out and see what I see. We work with struggling school systems, struggling kids, and struggling families. It is the same divestment pattern in South Carolina and in West Virginia that I see in Tennessee, Mississippi, New Mexico, Arkansas, Kentucky. It goes on and on. When programs get cut, families suffer. We do not want to be following the example of these communities. I understand that lowering the tax rate seems like policy that would help children and families. I'm here to tell you, it doesn't. It helps those of us paying a lot of taxes, but hurts Lynchburg, particularly children and families. It feels penny wise, but is actually pound foolish. Instead, we need to invest in Lynchburg. Invest is the right word, right? I know you all do this in your personal lives. We set aside hard-fought money so that we get more in return. We need to invest in Lynchburg City Schools and the Superintendent's fifteen-fifty plan, which would pay fifteen an hour for crucial classified staff and fifteen thousand as a starting salary for teachers. This helps not only, and most importantly, our children, but also impacts the many, many Lynchburgers who work for LCS. We need to invest in the fifteen-fifty plan for the future of our city. We need to invest in our downtown so we can continue to build businesses and recruit new workers. We need to invest in our Parks and Recreation Department, who has been really killing it lately, creating a city we all want to spend time in. I ask you, don't follow the examples of the many places I go for work and fall for very short-sighted policy of reducing this tax and shortchanging our city. You have the chance to be heroes here. You have the chance to build up Lynchburg so that it's thriving for all of us, but most importantly, for our children and for our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Pence, followed by Maggie Millard and Michael Bremer.
Mayor Reed, Council members. My name is Joan Pence, and I live in Ward Two. I'm here to give you my take on EC Glass High School. It wasn't the same as what we've heard tonight. Here's a picture of my son Benjamin. He's got Down Syndrome, autism, and he is basically non-verbal. EC Glass wasn't a bad place, for the most part, for many people, but my experience was a little different. He, Benjamin, when he was, when we lived in Pennsylvania, he was in a private Catholic school for special needs, namely autism and Down Syndrome. It was called Mercy Special Learning Center. It was in Allentown, Pennsylvania. When we moved to Lynchburg several years ago, we enrolled him in EC Glass in the special needs program. At our first IEP meeting, when I was asked where we moved from, I responded Pennsylvania. I was told by a gentleman at the table in our IEP meeting, "Don't expect us to be like Pennsylvania." When I heard that, my heart sank, because I knew that meant that the quality of my son's education was going to suffer. I am not here to criticize teachers, because I'm an assistant professor myself... Well, I was. In Pennsylvania, I was a mental health nurse, teaching mental health, and my daughter currently is a teacher in Lynchburg City Schools. I know how hard teachers work against difficult odds, but I can't help comparing the quality of the education my son received at the Mercy Learning Center in PA, where he experienced, as to what he experienced in the Lynchburg school system. In the school in Pennsylvania, Ben was a part of a program where they took monthly trips for things like gymnastics, dance, swimming, vocational activities at local businesses, along with performances in plays and dance recitals. There was constant communication between the staff and myself, and I had access to the details of his program on a daily basis. The work that came home was varied, and I could see that he was advancing slowly in his academic skills. Once he came to the Lynchburg school system, I lost the daily communication and visibility into what was going on in his learning. He came home pretty much day after day with nothing but papers where he was writing his name all day. They did have a few other activities, such as gym, which he really liked. Twenty nineteen, Ben graduated from EC Glass, but lockdowns were becoming a frequent problem in the school because of the gang-related fighting. And because Ben is non-verbal, you can imagine how my anxiety would increase during those kind of times. So the cost per child with the private school was about a third less as to what EC Glass gets from funding. And I saw, again, I don't blame the teachers, but I was wondering what was going on with the poor results that are currently, your enrollment's decreasing in Lynchburg, and the results aren't always good for the children. So the administration is responsible, I believe, for school outcomes, and I think we need to start holding the administration accountable for what money they do get. And hopefully, I'm all for teacher pay raises, but simply throwing money, continue throwing money at a school and saying, "Oh, let's just give money, and something's going to change," you're just going to get more of the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie Millard, followed by Michael Bremer and David Ream.
Hi. I'm Maggie Millard. I'm the parent of an LCS third grader and a soon-to-be preschooler, and I own a home in Lynchburg. I came to the last meeting and asked what qualifies you to think you know better than the experts: the city manager, the chief financial officer, the budget office, and go against their budget. After reading about categorical funding this week, I'm back. I came back to ask the same thing. Who do you people think you are to determine where the school system needs to spend its money? I wish Councilor Farrellde was here this week. I was really hoping to ask him what "stuff" and "things" he's been quoted as saying he thinks the schools need to cut. That's about as specific as I'd expect from a group of people who know nothing about managing a school system. And if we're going to ignore our city's budget experts, we deserve more specifics than "stuff" and "things." You have students, teachers, school board members, and parents here telling you what your community needs, and it's your job to listen to them. When they tell you that we can't attract and retain staff and teachers without approving the fifteen-fifty plan, who are you to tell them no? My eight-year-old daughter has nightmares about being shot after every lock-in and lockdown she goes through at RS Payne. I was late for work twice this week because the school bus is so unreliable. I get messages from my daughter's teacher at all hours of the day and night because she's never able to stop working. Don't tell me our schools have enough money. Don't tell me the city has enough money. You do not have the expertise to budget by category for the schools, just like you don't have the expertise to overrule the city's financial professionals. Please respect the experts and let them do the jobs that we hired them to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Bremer, followed by David Ream and Lindsay Van Zyle.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Michael Bremer. I reside in Ward Four. City council will have to reduce spending as a result of your proposed tax rate reduction. One target for cuts is the public school system. Some on council have suggested that they should distribute school money by category rather than by the traditional method of lump-sum allocation. Your consideration of this method of funding has derailed broader budget discussion and postponed critical decisions while council tries to learn the intricacies of school finance. Allocating school funds by category is an attempt by some council members, who have no knowledge of the operation of the school system, to fund only classroom instruction, and in the words of one council member, "Eliminate the leftovers." A presentation by city staff and Superintendent Edwards exposed how complex categorical funding would be. The professional staff of LCS also knows that the nominal standards of quality imposed during the recession of two thousand eight are outmoded and inadequate to provide even the basic education today that our children deserve. As comments by some council members have made clear, council does not, some on council do not want to fund administrative functions. Some members of council seem willing to eliminate behavioral specialists while simultaneously calling for more discipline. "Just throw them out," said one councilman. Some would cripple successful initiatives like the Empowerment Academy at the same time they decry less-than-ideal graduation rates. These comments expose a blindness to the interlocking structures required to meet the needs of all LCS students and demonstrate an indifference toward our neediest families. Provide at least the three million dollars proposed in the city manager's budget to create competitive salaries and actual living wages. Abandon the effort to allocate school funds by category. On a related note, although Councilmember Missions last week said he could make decisions dispassionately, in spite of the fact that his family's income would be impacted by his vote, he has not yet recused himself from these discussions and deliberations. I call upon him to do so now before any further discussion of funding of the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. David Ream, followed by Lindsay Van Zyle and Joudli Saint Fleur.
Hello, my name's David Ream, and I live in Ward Three. And I originally came to talk about hope and cast a vision and talk about truth and courage. And I'm listening to many comments that are going on tonight, and I have worked as a school teacher, public school teacher, for thirty-one years in three different states, many different principals, many different systems, and I know that there is more than one way to educate a child. And just an off-the-cuff remark, just an observation I've made over my years, is that in a school district, there are many people at the administrative level that are not producing results for children. And those salaries are usually much higher than a teacher makes. And I don't know the exact numbers, but I do know the general trend is that administration is, well, most school districts are top-heavy in administration. And if we're short on teachers and we need qualified people in there, I think you've got them on your books right now. They're called administrators. They're sitting in offices somewhere handling papers for administration to administrate, to administrate. Meanwhile, you've got kids who are suffering. It sounds like, pretty obviously, kids are having problems in school. So that was not what I planned to talk about. I was planning to talk about a stable family and building hope and having the courage to speak the truth. But that's what I ended up with, is coming up with this, because this is where we need to go. If you want to solve a fifteen-fifty problem, probably should start pulling about, well, fifteen to fifty administrators out of non-producing their overhead costs. I'm sure a budget person understands the difference between overhead and production. If schools exist to help children, and you've got people who are not producing results with children and paying them exorbitant salaries to the denial of producers who are being underfunded, school bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, school teachers, substitute teachers, there are many, many people who are actually making the lives and the difference of children every day, and those are the people that need support. And if administration would be willing to step in and close this gap, I have absolute confidence that point eight-nine is just fine. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. Lindsay Van Zyle, followed by Joudli Saint Fleur and Sarah Green. Lindsay Van Zyle. Okay. Joudli Saint Fleur. It's a fun name. No? Okay. Sarah Green. No? Okay. Karen Warren. Karen Warren, no. All right. Sarah Blankenship. No? Wow, okay. Gislaine Lewis. Okay. Andrea Hurt. No? All right. Jeff Rosner.
Now, that's interesting because the same four members have taken the opposite approach to the overall city budget. That is, they have said very little about where they would want specific cuts. Instead, they want the city staff to produce a budget based on the 89 cent tax rate. So it appears they want to shift the blame for cuts to the city staff. Some members of city council have used past Lynchburg City Schools enrollment numbers to support their positions. But the cuts to the LCS budget, which would result from an 89 cent tax rate, could lead to a decline in quality and a decline in future enrollment. So this could be a self-fulfilling prophecy. I hope not. But finding the solutions that city schools and the city need will be difficult, especially difficult with the divisive rhetoric with negative connotations coming from some city council members. Here are some examples of this divisive rhetoric. Both Mr. Helgason and Mr. Missions have called city staff bureaucrats. Mr. Missions has called public schools government schools. He has said, and I quote, "The woke mind virus has infected the municipal government and the public schools. Conservatives are going to get rid of it." Unquote. His comments on citizens exercising their First Amendment rights outside City Hall tonight also has rhetoric about the, quote, "radical woke left." Unquote. These examples are from council members' Facebook pages and also from some comments at today's work session. But in spite of this rhetoric, let us hope that city council can somehow find a way to avoid this self-fulfilling prophecy. Thank you.
Thank you. Lanay Haley, followed by Kristy Horsley and Kate Goodman.
Good evening. My name is Lanay Haley. I'm a retired LCS public school teacher who is proud to spend my last 10 years teaching in number-one big orange country, Go Pioneers. I'm here to talk about boldness and transparency and LCS. Representatives of the new majority on city council have promised that if elected, they would usher in a new era of boldness and transparency in city government. Now, we all know that bold tax activism is central to their pledge. Transparency is, as well, however, the absent vice mayor, Feraldi, for instance, stated in February, and I quote, "We need greater accountability and transparency within Lynchburg City Schools, greater emphasis on parental involvement, greater emphasis on the classroom, and greater emphasis on a great number of other items." Now, as the new city council majority plans to change the method of school funding from lump to categorical sums, and with pledges to support 5% raises only in SOQ positions, and with Councilor Helgason musing publicly that the new city council majority might not increase schools' local monies at all, the boldness, if that's what you want to call it, is on ample display. Your public comments are notable, however, for a lack of transparency, a lack of clarity, and a lack of specificity. For example, the absent vice mayor claims that Lynchburg City Schools tries to do too much for too many people. What is the too much that vice mayor is referring to? Too much of what and for whom? What are the metrics or parameters of that too much? How can any Lynchburg citizen form a clear idea of what the absent vice mayor means? Similarly, the new majority on city council claims it wants a greater emphasis on the classroom, as Vice Mayor Feraldi's, quote, "above" illustrates. This implies that LCS has somehow not been focusing on the classroom and instruction, the two main things that school systems are frankly uniquely trained and uniquely experienced in doing. On what information is that based? Where is the proof, the data to support that implication? What exactly does a greater emphasis on the classroom look like? For example, one of the most important predictors of successful classroom learning is the quality of the teacher. Yet the new majority on city council opposes Superintendent Edwards' 15-50 plan, which we've heard so much about tonight, which would raise teacher and support staff salaries so as to compete for the best and brightest new teachers graduating from our wonderful local colleges and universities. Salaries are a focus classroom issue, are they not? The new majority on city council has, in these and other recent instances, abandoned transparency regarding LCS, leaving parents, teachers, and students with literally no idea of what city council would cut with their new tax plan, but only knowing that the cuts for sure are coming. In terms of boldness and transparency, I think the question most everyday Lynchburg citizens have for the new majority on city council is, are you bold enough to be transparent with the citizens of this town?
Thank you.
And what exactly you're going to cut from the funding?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Kristy Horsley, Kate Goodman, and then Pam Wright.
Good evening, council members. Hopefully, that's a good level. So I wanted to come back and talk to you today about sort of the intertwining of my sort of area of interest and expertise and the budget that we're discussing. So you may or may not be aware, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and specifically this Sunday coming up is what's called Blue Sunday, where faith communities can allocate time in their service to pray for children who've experienced child abuse, as well as for those working with them and their healing. And I wanted to kind of walk you through some of the items that specifically that prayer requests, and also, again, the way that that sort of intersects with some of the budget items. So one of the things that the prayer talks about is praying for the children and adults who have been abused, specifically for the presence of caring and stable adults in their lives. So it's important for you to know, when CPS has a contact with a family, when they go out to investigate an allegation of abuse or neglect, ideally, we do not want that child to come into foster care, right? We want to be able to divert them, to place them with family, people that they already love and connected to, and who can safely nurture them and protect them, get them connected to services. When we do not have adequate staffing for CPS, they do not have time to do those intensive familial searches. And instead, we end up with poorer outcomes for the child, like the child coming into foster care, increasing our foster care numbers, increasing expenses to the state, to the city. Additionally, when children are in foster care, we want them to exit foster care to family. Again, I will tell you, I've said this many times, when children come into foster care, if we do not put in intensive efforts, it is a slow slide to adoption by non-family members. Because helping families heal, helping them take accountability, and repair relationships is time, labor, emotion-intensive. So when we do not have adequate staffing at the foster care level, we are not able to help facilitate those processes, and we create families that pass down further generational trauma. Additionally, we are hemorrhaging staff at Department of Social Services, especially for child caring professionals. That is partly because of the amount of trauma that those professionals are absorbing and seeing in their cases. There are significant turnover. The more times a child's caseworker changes during a foster care case, the less likely they are to reach permanency. And again, we create children who linger in foster care, increasing the cost to the city, and again, creating greater likelihood that children will exit foster care without a permanent family structure or exit to adoption, again, creating more trauma for this child and for their family. Also, it's really important for you to note that schools also are a critical part of our children's support system. So also adequately funding schools is critical for that as well.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Kate Goodman from the Social Services Advisory Board, followed by Pam Wright and Scott Braybrand.
Good evening. My name is Kate Goodman, and I'm a resident of Ward Four. And I'm here tonight as a member of the Social Services Advisory Board, having been appointed by at least some members of this body. I expressed an interest in serving in this capacity as my adult sister sustained a brain injury in an automobile accident, and as a result, is disabled and benefits from the services offered by our Department of Human Services. Knowing how vital this support is to us, I wanted a broader view and understanding of the role our Department of Human Services plays in our community. I suspect few in this room know that 84.5% of the Human Services budget is funded by state and federal dollars. The other 15.5% is a local match. What a bargain for our city. We receive the innumerable benefits of the work being done, and yet only have to pay for 15.5% of it. That's why I'm shocked and saddened to know that after having submitted a conservative proposed fiscal year 2024 budget, we understand budgetary constraints, we were still asked to reduce our requested budget by almost $600,000. The Department of Human Services provides day-to-day assistance to the most vulnerable citizens in Lynchburg, many of them children. The goal of promoting the well-being of our citizens through the delivery of essential services and benefits strengthens families and ensures individuals achieve their highest level of self-sufficiency. This is a goal I hope all of you support wholeheartedly. However, by so severely limiting the funding provided, which, remember, is only 15.5% of the total, the chances of reaching this goal are diminished. Here are some facts. Lynchburg's population is approximately 79,000. Roughly 34% of our citizens receive some sort of public assistance. As of March, there were 168 children in foster care and approximately 280 youth receiving services. We are the sixth-highest locality for children in care in the Commonwealth. In 2022, there were 1,500 valid complaints of child abuse and/or neglect. We average 50 complaints of adult abuse, neglect, and/or exploitation each month. Human Services averaged 171 children in foster care monthly for 2022. This month alone, there have been four foster care worker resignations. Two foster care workers are on extended medical leave, one for stress and burnout. There's a CPS supervisor on extended medical leave, and our Adult Protective Services supervisor resigned last month. What does this mean? This means that we are significantly understaffed and underfunded. Even if we were to receive the conservative funding for which we asked, which would allow for the hiring of three full-time and the upgrade of two to full-time family services specialists, the caseload per family services specialist would still exceed the standard set forth in the Code of Virginia of 15 cases per specialist. Not only does this mean we're out of compliance, but it's not best practice and is detrimental to children and families, as well as to the mental and physical well-being of our employees. As you consider the best way you can use your position to serve all of the citizens you represent, I beg you to make the smallest of investments in the well-being of our most vulnerable citizens. You'll also be making an investment in our future. The cost of not doing so is just too high. Without these services, some of our neighbors won't eat or have medical coverage. Parents won't have childcare so they can go to work or school without the most basic of needs met. It's simply not realistic to believe everything will be okay.
Thank you. Pam Wright, followed by Scott Braybrand, and then Beth Savage. Pam Wright? No? Okay. Scott Braybrand?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of Lynchburg City Council. I'm Scott Braybrand, and I'm resident of Ward One. First, I want to say thank you for your public service. Now more than ever, we need to thank those who go into public service to help support and strengthen our community. I know a little bit about public service and being in the public eye, and it can be thankless work at a time where many of us across this country have been too quick to blame and shame instead of working together to find common ground. In this time, we need you all, our public leaders, to let go of grievance and embrace grace toward your neighbors here in this city and toward each other. I have five points to share with you tonight. First, I ask each of you to listen to all of those that have already spoken and those that will with an open heart and an open mind. The Lynchburg community cares deeply about the city, and it's one of the reasons I have returned to Lynchburg with my family this past year. Second, Lynchburg can pass with your leadership an "and" budget. You can have tax relief and invest in public safety. You can have tax relief and invest in Lynchburg City Schools. You can have tax relief and invest in a high-quality city and school employee workforce. You can have tax relief and continue to invest in economic growth in the city. It does not have to be an "or" budget. It can and must be an "and" budget. Third, speaking of economic growth, I understand the current budget proposes defunding the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance. To make a decision like that tells our existing business community, any potential corporate investor, that our city isn't interested in business recruitment, retention, or expansion. I don't think this council wants their legacy to be anti-growth or anti-business, but that's the message it will send. I strongly encourage city council to reconsider. Fourth, Lynchburg City Council, all of you deserve respect. You're public figures doing public service. And the Lynchburg City School Board and school administration deserve respect, too. A city budget that does not fully fund Lynchburg City Schools and moves toward categorical funding for schools is a slap in the face to the professionalism of the Lynchburg City School Board and its constitutional responsibility for the administration and supervision of schools. Fifth, as I close, I want you to know that I strongly believe, I strongly believe that this country, this Commonwealth, and yes, this city needs to unite across the aisle, across the bridges that divide us. I ask you to create grace and space for each other, for the folks here tonight.
Thank you.
We can do this. I know you'll meet the moment.
Thank you so much. Beth Savage, followed by Tyler Turner and David Hagman.
Good evening, Mayor Reed and members of the council. I'm a college professor, so there's nothing I love more than a captive audience. So thank you for giving me this opportunity tonight. I've been a Lynchburg resident for 15 years, and I'm here tonight to object to the proposed reduction in the tax rate. I like to do that by telling you some stories about my grandfathers. I should maybe mention I'm an English professor. I love stories, and research shows that they build empathy. I think that their stories matter because they left legacies they wanted those after them to build on, and they wanted to leave the world a better place than they found it. I think when we cut funding for essential workers and city projects to the bone, we're leaving this place worse than we found it and leaving future generations to start over again every time with no hope for real progress. We don't want Lynchburg to be stuck. We don't want it to move backwards. We want it to thrive. My maternal grandfather, Woodrow Wilson Taylor, he had a lot to live up to from birth with that name. He enlisted in the Navy, served his tour, and then got out. But after Pearl Harbor, like many in the armed forces, he rejoined and subsequently fought in World War II, fighting, by the way, against real tyranny, not the puffed-up rhetoric about tyranny that we like to bandy about so casually today. This was actual fascism. My cousin, his grandson, followed in his footsteps, attending the Naval Academy in Annapolis. When my grandfather Taylor was in his 80s, he visited Charleston, South Carolina, where my cousin was able to get clearance to take him on an active naval vessel. You can imagine the difference between a ship in 1942 and the year 2000. The technology, the advancements were stunning. This moment was so important because it was a moment when my cousin could appreciate and celebrate my grandfather for paving the way and his legacy. And my grandfather could in turn appreciate that future generations and his own grandson took what he helped to build and made it better and better. My paternal grandfather is quite a different story. My grandfather Savage, whose name I still carry. He grew up in poverty, dropped out of school in the first grade to work in the Georgia cotton mills. My grandmother did the same thing. They had to support their families, and they were exploited and lived in deplorable conditions in order to do so. By the time I knew them, their bodies were broken down by the labor of their youth, and they were always ill. But in their lifetime, laws were passed to stop the exploitation of children, exploitation they themselves had endured. They saw and celebrated this progress, though it was too late for them. When my grandfather Taylor was in his eighties, he visited Charleston, South Carolina, where my cousin was able to get clearance to take him on an active naval vessel. You can imagine the difference between a ship in 1942 and the year 2000. The technology, the advancements were stunning. This moment was so important because it was a moment when my cousin could appreciate and celebrate my grandfather for paving the way and his legacy. And my grandfather could in turn appreciate that future generations and his own grandson took what he helped to build and made it better and better. My paternal grandfather is quite a different story. My grandfather Savage, whose name I still carry. He grew up in poverty, dropped out of school in the first grade to work in the Georgia cotton mills. My grandmother did the same thing. They had to support their families and they were exploited and lived in deplorable conditions in order to do so. By the time I knew them, their bodies were broken down by the labor of their youth and they were always ill. But in their lifetime, laws were passed to stop the exploitation of children, exploitation they themselves had endured. They saw and celebrated this progress, though it was too late for them because it protected future generations. I hope we can make our decisions in the city of Lynchburg by both looking back to what we've been given and looking forward to see how we can leave this place better than we found it. We cannot cut the most crucial programs and underpay the most crucial workers in this city. I hope the council will not persist in this deeply unwise and deeply undemocratic decision. If the council does persist, perhaps we can all learn a different lesson from my grandparents. My grandfather Taylor fought for democracy and I hope we'll exercise our right to recall any counselors who behave undemocratically and make backroom deals while ignoring the voices of their constituents. I hope we will take the lessons of my grandfather Savage and turn to the same group that saved future generations from child labor, the unions. If city workers and teachers unionize, they can help to protect themselves from decisions like these which make political gains on the backs of our hardest-working and lowest-paid workers.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we now hear from Tyler Turner with Americans for Prosperity, followed by David Hagman and Katie Snyder.
Good evening, council. A little tired now. I work for Americans for Prosperity. I'm the grassroots engagement director for the Lynchburg and Roanoke area. Right now, across America in thirty-six states, we have, we have a nationwide canvassing effort called to reignite the American dream. We go throughout households, millions of doors across this nation to see what will allow more freedoms and more opportunities and what is the key to unleashing prosperity throughout this nation. Currently, in my door canvassing efforts in this area, sixty percent of the people say the number one issue that impacts them is the economy, whether it's inflation, government spending, or lack of economic opportunity. Human flourishing comes from freeing individuals from the unnecessary barriers, releasing them from the hardened shackles of regulatory policy and the limitations of opportunities and the overburden of taxation. We should all believe and be united that freedom and opportunity is vital to human advancement. More entitlements, more programs, more government expansion, more administrative agencies is the pathway to tyranny. And while tyranny might not be here in full blood, it eventually will lead to that pathway. Liberty is grounded in mobility. Liberty is grounded in opportunity. And most importantly, liberty is grounded in freedom. I fight with individuals all across my region for educational choice and for more opportunities for every child and to empower every parent and every family in the Commonwealth. I fight to lower, or preferably abolish, state income tax and small business tax and limit regulatory tax. I fight with independent contractors to protect their ability to keep their sovereignty as a 1099 employee without the shackles of government. I fight with citizens to lower the cost of energy by holding environmental bureaucrats accountable and reducing regulatory policy. And I fight with teachers, I fight with dentists and professionals to have cleaner and more efficient pathways to licensures so they are able to do their occupations without the restrictions and the regulatory policies and the red tape of government. And I fight with individuals who have been incarcerated with pathways to get back into society and be viable citizens. My umbrella organization, Stand Together, has one of the largest café momentum, which is one of the largest outreach to juveniles who have been incarcerated, which allows them a pathway back into society. I fight for freedom. I fight for opportunity. I fight for individual liberties for every citizen, no matter their race, no matter their ideology, no matter their gender, no matter their religion, or their socioeconomic background. Thomas Sowell, one of the great classic liberal theorists, said inflation is in effect a hidden tax upon the citizen. The money that people have saved is robbed a part of its purchasing power, which is quietly transferred to the government that issues new money. People are fleeing states that they are overtaxed because they're already paying the tax with inflation and then more taxation is causing them to leave. You see blue states all the time, whether it's New York, whether it's California, whether it's my home state of Minnesota where both of you are from. The people are leaving because of the burden of taxation. We have been trained through society, through education, and through propagation that we need government to give us more. But what we need is government to release the shackles, the burden, and the regulatory policy that keeps on holding people back from moving forward, for having more opportunities. And it is stifling innovation and entrepreneurship. That is the American dream. The American dream is opportunity, is freedom, and is human empowerment. I do agree with lowering the tax rate. Because I think through that, you will see more innovation, you will see more entrepreneurship, and you will see more opportunity for this city of Lynchburg, and it will become a safe haven of freedom. And people will be afraid. But in our fear, we will step forward and we will see human advancement. Thank you.
Thank you. David Hagman, Katie Snyder, and then Erica Powers. Katie, David Hagman coming?
I'm coming.
Great, sorry.
I'm on the phone, yeah.
No worries.
All right, how you folks doing?
Good.
I'm Dave Hagman. I'm a Lynchburg City resident for fifteen years. I have two children in Lynchburg City Schools. And I want to just make a couple of points here. Everyone else has spoken very eloquently, more eloquently than I will, no doubt. But I think one of the issues I want to highlight here is that most of you folks, if this, you know, tax, tax cut goes through, and I just want to point out too, I don't like the term "tax relief" because it implies, and apologies to Dr. Braybrand, I know you've said it a couple of times, but that implies that taxes are a burden, they're onerous, and I would gladly pay more taxes if it meant better healthcare for people, better mental health treatment for students, students being able to eat lunch at school, people being paid what they are worth. So I don't view taxes as onerous or as a burden. I would gladly pay more. But I want to talk particularly about teachers and the education system because, you know, we're living in this culture that despite, you know, sort of the rhetoric of, oh, teachers are great and, you know, children are our future and all this, R.I.P. Whitney, that everyone thinks they know how to teach. Everyone thinks they know what goes on in a classroom and they, they don't. My mom was a teacher for thirty years. I taught high school for one year. I was a college professor for about twelve years. And first time I got in a classroom, completely, you know, was in awe of what these teachers do every day. How many teachers do we have here, support staff, bus drivers? All right. You know, I, my mom, I called her after I taught for three days and I was like, how the hell did you do this for thirty years? I could barely do it for thirty days. So my hat is off to all these teachers here. And I think, you know, we tend to, you know, demonize teachers in a lot of ways. I hear all this talk about woke mind virus and all this other sort of stuff. And the reality is that teachers are wanting their students to learn. They want them to be able to be healthy, happy, productive citizens. You know, at the end of the day, you're working your tail off trying to ensure that these students are adequately taken care of, they are learning what you want them to learn, they have enough to eat, you're providing emotional support. You're lucky if you have, you know, five minutes at the end of class to sort of infect them with the woke mind virus. There's just not time for it because of all of the effort that they put into what goes on, on a day-to-day basis. And I think the reality is, most people have no idea, they don't appreciate what goes on in the classroom and all the work that these teachers do for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Katie Snyder, followed by Erica Powers, and then Kurt Deemer.
Good evening, Mayor Reed, members of City Council. My name's Katie Snyder. I'm a resident of Ward Three. I'm here to speak in opposition to the eighty-nine cent tax rate that's being jammed through by four members of City Council without any transparency onto what it will mean for the city services, our schools, and our citizens. For those who've been following the process, and a lot of us have, we see what's going on here. Four members of City Council have worked in secret to settle on an eighty-nine cent tax rate before hearing from the citizens. They told the city manager what to cut in private, and they avoided any discussion on what they intend to cut while in public. Today, Donna Witt was finally able to outline their plans. The cuts she detailed were heartbreaking for our city. They are deep, they are painful. Everyone in Lynchburg needs to know that cuts to our schools and city services and future investments in the things that make Lynchburg great are coming. We need to make sure our neighbors know the details and who is responsible for it. Make no mistake, the budget will bankrupt Lynchburg's future. If this council manages to recklessly push through this eighty-nine cent tax rate, the improvements that have been happening here in the past decade will stop. They're already pushing back projects the city had slated for the year ahead and using those funds to pay for their tax cut. They're removing the budget building inspectors and engineers needed to make Lynchburg's infrastructure safe. They're limiting teacher pay raises to only those that they value, as if some aren't worthy enough to make a living wage. Because of these moves, instead of Lynchburg that moves forward, we will be a city in pause and then in decline. Try pitching that slogan to businesses that want to come here. The last point I want to make is this. Lynchburg is not a radical right-wing city. Most people in Lynchburg do not want an extreme right-wing ideologues choking the life out of this community. There's been a lot of talk about last year's election. Some members of this new right-wing majority claim that because they managed to get fifty-two percent of the vote, that they should get one hundred percent of what they want. That's how politicians talk, not public servants, which is what you all claim to be. I believe that the Lynchburg voters last year did want more balance to the taxing and spending that happens here, but I don't believe that they wanted this new council to take an axe to the things that we love about Lynchburg, including our schools and our services. I think the only hope this city has at this point is for Vice Mayor Farady and Councilman Taylor to work with Mayor Reed on a compromise rate that is more reflective of a balanced approach the citizens have made clear that they want. If you didn't hear them, they were outside talking before the meeting and were in here today. We're hoping that the vice mayor will act more like his mentor, Randy Nelson, and less like his bully, Marty Missions. We are a divided city. Please provide leadership in this moment that brings this city together. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Powers, followed by Kurt Deemer, and then LeAnn Johnson.
My name is Erica Powers. I have been a Lynchburg City resident since 2005, and I recently moved from Ward One to Ward Two. I'm a parent of three Lynchburg City School students, ranging from pre-kindergarten all the way through high school. Since my eldest has started school, I have consistently picked Lynchburg City residency because of Lynchburg City Schools, and they offer more than the surrounding counties. While our family begged us to choose Bedford County and real estate opportunities pointed us towards Campbell and Amherst, I chose Lynchburg City Schools in Lynchburg because this is where I want my children to be educated. I'm greatly concerned with the council members' proposals to lower taxes and more so with proposals for categorical funding of Lynchburg City Schools. I've taken time each year to review the budget proposals and follow the actions of the school board throughout the year, and I have never seen an instance in which I believe the district has engaged in spending which merits this level of oversight and loss of autonomy. I think it's presumptuous and foolish for the council to believe they know how to run the schools better than the people who engage in their day-to-day operations. I would further like to add that while I don't believe anyone would argue the personnel position covers, covered under the standards of quality are required for success, I am in Lynchburg because of our ability to innovate. I am, I believe offering raises to only standards of quality positions may put those innovations at risk by divesting in those staff members and ultimately decrease access to well-rounded educations. Please accept this as my request that council not enact any proposals for categorical funding and accept LCS's request for funding in the upcoming budget. I firmly believe in Dr. Edwards' 1550 plan and that it is necessary for our school's future and that anything that impedes our ability to attract qualified staff and respond without bureaucracy to the needs of our student population would be a detriment to the whole city. The schools have my vote of confidence in advocating for my children's education and budgeting for those needs. Also, apparently I can't read when I'm standing up here.
Thank you very much.
I thought I was educated in Amherst, not Lynchburg City's voice.
Kurt Deemer with Let's Make Lynchburg a Two-A Sanctuary.
Madam Mayor, City Council, staff, thank you again for the opportunity to speak to each one of you. I've been here a few times this year, almost every council meeting, and I know some people probably tired of hearing from me. But I do think as a representative of the Two-A Sanctuary movement that successfully created the sanctuary that we live in, I did have some ideas about small-town politics that I think still apply and I hope will help give you some wisdom in the tough decisions that you've got to make. And I do understand that those decisions are extremely tough. Politics is the allocation of scarce resources, and that's y'all's job. That's the power we, the people, have given you to do. And we, we didn't give it to you to fully disperse it to staff, but I respect what they have come up with and the pencils that they have sharpened and the things that they have proposed. I think they are good starts. I really appreciate the robust debate that's taken place. That's what our government is about. We're a constitutional republic that acts in a very democratic way. And the elections last fall were the people of Lynchburg speaking loudly to what their wishes are for the future of our beautiful city. And I do love our city. I'm a member of Ward Three. I've been a resident of Lynchburg since 1973, when both my teacher parents moved me here as a child. And I grew up in a home of teachers. And, and I understand that perspective quite well. I thought they were geniuses for working most of the year and then having three months off in the summer to hang out with me. Now, it didn't work out exactly like that. They were busy and they kept busy during the summer, doing, teaching things a lot of the times. But my dad was a tennis coach and, and he, he taught me a lot about the values of sports and the values of teamwork. And I hope to see you guys acting as a team up here. But I don't think of you as, as the, the bench warmers. I think you're the front line and you're the ones we've given the power to. And as a sanctuary city, that means we protect our people and that we love them. And I heard a story from a lady just this week who told me that she was deciding not to put her two children into sports this year because she had to make some tough decisions and tighten her belt. She had to figure out what to do with, with their kids. And I watched the kids' eyes as they literally learned this decision was having to be made by a mother. Tough decision. And they were not happy, as you can imagine, to find out that they weren't going to be playing sports. But we do have to make tough decisions, and a lot of citizens in Lynchburg have had to make tough decisions. And we will have to make more tough decisions. Even with eighty-nine cent rate, there will be people that will struggle mightily to make those payments. And if there are people that want to pay more taxes, I don't think there's anything precluding them from doing so, at least not to my knowledge. But there are people who, who literally can't and will have to make decisions about groceries and medicine and other tough decisions about what they're going to spend their money on. The allocation of scarce resources, we do it as families, we do it as businesses. Our staff does it. City manager is doing it. And it might surprise some of you to find out that I'm a twenty-year state employee. I understand making decisions as state employees do, but never once did I assume with the elected officials that I worked for that the people had loaned me the power. They didn't. I worked for my boss. And in this situation, you're the bosses, okay? They give you expert advice, and hopefully good, based on how much they're paid, hopefully great advice. I think they have given you some good advice. Not all of it I've agreed with, and I'm sure you don't agree with it all either, but you take it and you make those tough decisions. And if you love Lynchburg as much as I do and you love the people of Lynchburg, you will not pit firemen against teacher or neighbor against neighbor or Democrat against Republican. You will look out for the best interest of all the citizens of Lynchburg. And you will look out so that you, your decisions will be decisions that help them and make their lives better. And I know it's tough. And I know it's tough, and I do want to thank you, I'm sincere in that, for the tough decisions that you will have to make, but keep the debate going. I don't care if it gets a little rowdy, don't mind it. The way we used to settle things was with duels. I'm really happy we don't do that anymore.
Thank you.
So let it get loud, let it get rowdy, use your words.
Thank you.
Speak from your heart and your mind and do what's best for the citizens of Lynchburg.
Thank you very much. LeAnn Johnson from the Young Women's Empowerment Academy.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is LeAnn Mace. I am the Division-wide Nurse for Lynchburg City Schools. I am also a Lynchburg City native and a lead volunteer for the Young Women's Academy of Lynchburg. At Young Women's Academy, we teach our girls how to develop skills to become the best version of themselves. We also pride ourselves in developing our girls to be world changers. In working with our girls, I've come in contact with several moms, guardians, and other support systems, such as caseworkers, probation officers, teachers, and mentors. This is why I'm here tonight. I've seen the hard work and dedication of our social workers. Most social workers that I come across serve in group homes, court services, as well as truancy team with Lynchburg City Schools. These community leaders are directly impacted by the upcoming budget changes, and we want you to know why we do not support the ninety-eight cent tax rate. You see, Lynchburg, although it's beautiful and it's an amazing place to work, play, and live, we have challenges that seem to not be addressed. But this is where I challenge you. Have you ever worked with a teen who has left home with a younger sibling that they have to take care of? No electricity, barely anything to eat, the mom is mentally checked out, physically checked out, or a child that's dealing with verbal or physical abuse from mom or mom's boyfriend? It's bad when mom, of course, chooses boyfriend over daughter. Our children are dealing with physical and sexual assault. These situations are happening here in our city, and we are trying to come up with a way to support our social workers and our mentors and our people that are impacting these children. You see, these life-changing things are happening, and it requires work. Today, I challenge you to step in the ring with us. Day and night, our educators, city staff members, and community service are breaking down non-academic barriers that are in place in our community. This will require additional support and funding. I mean, nothing good is cheap. Our children are hurting. If you don't believe that, come to the school, I'm telling you. Classrooms with limited support, constant interruptions because of behaviors. Come to the group homes and speak to our teens that we see every Saturday, ask them why they're here. Of course, you're always welcome to come to our organization every Saturday morning, but we ask that you just take a moment and really think about it, review it, and see if there's a way that you can come up with ways to support our mentors and our social workers. The work that we've established is going to take time, but I fear the effects of this budget could cause our community to go backwards. I know you'll make the right decision for our future for Lynchburg. It's been a privilege to stand before you today. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Kalen Snyder, followed by Emily Shuch and Jessica Wise.
Good evening. My name is Kalen Snyder, and I'm the current Heritage High School representative for the school board. However, tonight, I'm speaking simply as a senior in Lynchburg City Schools. I'm here to tell you about the life-changing experiences that LCS has offered me and why cutting funding would affect thousands of other students like me. Aside from my family and friends, the most important thing in my life is theater. I've been doing theater in LCS since I was in first grade. LCS has cultivated an environment in their theater programs where I can truly be myself. These budget cuts will affect the people who have taught me theater, as well as the teachers who have ensured that I keep up with my grades and my work while I spend long nights in the theater for rehearsals and performances. City Council's plans to cut LCS's funding threaten these things and more. They would threaten the people who have taught me during the thirteen years I've attended LCS. They threaten the people who have provided me the space and resources I needed to cultivate my love for learning. They threaten the people who teach your children, as well as the children of the people who sit in this room today. They threaten the entire community, the one that you all claim to care about. A tax rate of just eighty-nine cents does nothing but take money away from our schools and services that people in our community need the most. I ask that you think carefully about who this decision will affect before you make it. We're watching, we're listening, and we are voting next November. I'd like to make one other point. Earlier today, Councilwoman Ms. Ginge pulled a quote from Heritage High School and EC Glass's current production of The Prom in an attempt to mislead people about what happens in our schools' theater programs. Isolating one line from a two-and-a-half-hour-long production takes away from the overall message that the show teaches: Acceptance of all people, even you, Mr. Missions. So on that note, I think everyone in this room should come to the performances of The Prom this Thursday and Friday night at seven to see what the show's actually about. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Emily Shuch, Jessica Wise, and then Laura Henry Stone.
Hi, my name is Emily Shuch, and I'm a senior at Randolph College. I'm currently student teaching at Dunbar Middle, and I plan to start my career teaching at EC Glass next school year. As someone who's passionate about making a difference in students' lives and genuinely loves being in the classroom, it breaks my heart to think about the responses I get when I tell people that I'm going to be a teacher. Typically, it's something like, "Are you planning on marrying rich?" I'm proud of the education that I've received and of the education I plan to provide to the students in this city. However, I am worried about beginning my independent adult life and financial life on the current pay scale. I'm a math teacher, so I like numbers. As I'm sure you're aware, the starting salary here for a first-year, fully-licensed teacher is roughly forty-three thousand dollars. If I split that up over twelve months, I'm looking at twenty-seven hundred for the month after taxes. The median rent for a one-bedroom apartment in Lynchburg is currently nine-hundred and ninety-five dollars, so about twelve hundred with utilities. That leaves me with fifteen hundred dollars for the entire month. At this point, I haven't factored in any type of insurance, retirement, student loan payments, car payments, gas, food, savings, investments, or emergency costs. Also, I'm a single woman with no children, no pets, and no responsibility to pay for or care for anyone other than myself. I'm sure you can imagine how much more difficult it would be if I had a family to support as most educators do. The children are the future, and it falls on us as educators to teach them how to be successful and how to survive in the real world. But right now, teachers are undervalued and underpaid. Educators everywhere are trading their financial stability for the job that they love, and they deserve to be recognized and rewarded for that continuous sacrifice. Unfortunately, no one wants to be a teacher anymore. Many excellent teachers are making the decision to leave the profession because they need a job that pays better, plain and simple. The qualified teachers leave, causing a shortage, so the state lowers the requirements of what it takes to even be a teacher. The lower the requirements, the fewer qualified and passionate people will be educating our kids. And at the end of the day, that is who it affects most: our children. So if you're okay with condemning those kids to a mediocre education, then it's going to fall back on you. At that point, you are making the statement that you don't value quality instruction, you don't care what kind of education the children receive, and you're fine with just anyone coming in and being in charge of shaping the future minds of our city. On behalf of the new teachers and the teachers who've been dealing with this issue for their entire careers, I implore you to be on the right side of history. There's an opportunity presented to you to show the staff and faculty of Lynchburg City Schools that you do value the sacrifices made, and you acknowledge that they're deserving of more. These are the people who vote you into office, and your vote on the approval of this budget will make it very clear where your priorities lie. I am passionate about this job, but passion is not enough to get me by. It's not too late to swallow your pride. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Shuch. I'm sorry that I butchered your last name. Jessica Wise, followed by Laura Henry Stone and James Citi.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Wise, and I'm a Lynchburg resident. I'm also a librarian at Sweetbrier College, just up twenty-nine. There are many things that concern me about the eighty-nine cent tax rate, many of which have already been brought up by the other speakers. As a librarian, however, I'd like to talk about how the proposed budget will impact the Lynchburg Public Library. The library is already understaffed, and with a budget cut imminent, they will be forced to eliminate two more staff positions. This will not only put strain on the remaining already overworked library staff, but this could also impact operating hours and overall efficiency of the library system. The library has already been forced to cut expenditures elsewhere due to budget cuts, such as the purchasing of physical audiobooks, which are enjoyed by many residents. I've heard complaints about the suspension of this service in particular from the same people who support budget cuts, like the ones that are currently being proposed. The library offers services that help support and expand its collections, but these valuable assets cost money, of which the library already has so little. More of the services will need to be terminated to offset the cuts, which will impact many city residents and their ability to access vital information and essential services that the library provides, especially to our low-income residents. Many residents see the value in the public library and are happy for a relatively small portion of their tax dollars to support library services for the common good. Those who want lower tax rates and thus a smaller budget, while also expecting the library to offer certain services and, in some cases, expect them to add even more, need to explain how these two concepts can coexist. How is the library meant to pay for these desired services while suffering budget cuts caused by the lower tax rate? Sidney Sheldon once said, "Libraries store the energy that fuels the imagination. They open up windows to the world and inspire us to explore and achieve and contribute to improving our quality of life." A strong library leads to a strong community, so if the library's budget continues to be gutted, all residents will suffer in one way or another. I have one final quote for you that I hope you'll take to heart. "Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation." Walter Cronkite. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura Henry Stone. No, she's not here, okay.
Good evening, City Council. The concern I wish to address with you tonight is my support of the fifteen-fifty plan for LCS staff. I know you've already heard all the data and the reasons for them, school board and others, so I think I'd just like to give a practical reason of why to consider this plan. This year, I took on a student teacher for the first time. I hope he's gained something from my mentorship beyond me telling him not to make kids believe learning is boring and how some days you just have to leave the school right at your contract hours, go straight to Sheetz, order yourself a mozzarella stick and an extra-large Diet Mountain Dew, and then gripe yourself in your car about whatever ticked you off that day and then drop it when you get home because life's too short to be angry about things that, quite frankly, you will probably care about tomorrow. As we talk about these things, though, one thing kind of struck me when he told me the other day that he had accepted a position in Amherst County. It was that he would automatically be making more money than me as a veteran teacher if not for the fact that I received stipends for coaching golf at Heritage High School, I announce for Heritage High School football and Heritage High School baseball, and I receive a master's degree stipend. The current compensation plan you're considering would actually only tend to exacerbate that issue as counties like Amherst and Bedford are considering seven percent increases in Amherst County and ten percent increases for teacher pay in Bedford County. Though I completely disagree, Councilwoman Hegelson, with your mischaracterization of our children as troublemakers, my own daughter being a child with an IEP who you insulted last time when you made such a comment about children who have to be taken out of the environment because they disrupt learning and calling them troublemakers, I again forgive you for that and don't ask for an apology. But what I say is that it highlights the issues that we have as an urban school district and the desperate need for higher compensation if we wish to attract and retain talented educators. Simply disciplining the kids isn't the answer. The way to retain and attract teachers is to show you respect them by offering them a fair wage. I conclude in saying that the fifteen-fifty plan isn't a goal, it's a necessary starting point. I hope you'll seriously consider the proposal as you look at forming the final budget, though one Councilman practices unproductive identity politics with claims that some of us with concerns are woke liberals, Marxists, heaven forbid, Democrats, and worst of all, the radical left. On his Facebook page, "We're actually your constituents and your neighbors, and we want what's best for our kids and our community," just like I hope you do. We simply have questions about how we get there with an unsustainable tax rate being proposed, and we have a difference of opinion that we'd like to have heard and fairly considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Chris Quigg, followed by Karen Quigg, and followed by Peter Sepharati.
Hello. Hello, my name is Chris Quigg, and I've been a Lynchburg resident for fifteen years. I hear the concern that our schools won't have enough money to pay for all of the current programs. For argument's sake, let's say that is true, because sometimes that is life's reality, both in our work and personal lives. I know my wife and I have had to cut back the past eighteen months. I have a suggestion on where the school system could cut back. This comes from experience. For the past twenty-four years, I have worked as a special education teacher. I started in Halifax County and have also worked in Lynchburg City. My suggestion: the elimination of the department under the heading of Equity and Community Relations. This move would free up a fairly large sum of money that could be used to pay our teachers more or to directly support classroom instruction in some other way. A second reason for my suggestion: teachers, including myself, we just want to help kids learn, teach curriculum, promote basic skills, help kids move forward in life with confidence. We want them to one day be good American citizens. But programs like diversity, equity, and inclusion may very well work counter to these objectives. This is because they are not grounded at America's founding. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal and endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, and among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The awesome story of America is the struggle for more and more people to know and experience true equality, not equity. An accurate teaching of American history would reveal the overall goodness of America and the working out of this equality idea, and this could be done at no extra charge. The new equity message, in reality, is not only expensive, but arguably serves as a disruption to true American values that we are in desperate need of passing on to the next generation. And I've heard a lot about...I taught in Lynchburg City for three years, and the teachers that left when I was there did not speak of money issues as the main reason they're leaving. I don't think they spoke of those at all, but they spoke of behavior issues as the reason they were leaving and the inability or unwillingness of administration to deal with those. And until that's addressed, I don't think putting more money into the system is really going to be effective. So please stick with the eighty-nine cent tax rate, and thank you, council members, for your service.
Thank you very much. Karen Quigg, followed by Peter Sepharati, and finally, Dr. Brenda Farmer will be our
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Karen Elizabeth Quigg, and I, too, have been a resident of Lynchburg for fifteen years. Since 1996, I've been teaching in some capacity in different states, including Lynchburg City Schools. Here are two quotes that I've had in my classroom from a Hebrew scholar. "It is senseless to educate a fool since he has no heart for learning. To learn, you must love discipline; it is stupid to hate correction." I know we're here tonight to discuss money and budgets, but let me ask you something. What amount of money can change the heart of a student and create a love for discipline? None, really, I believe. And another question: when's the last time you actually spent time in a public school classroom? Mine was today. You know, some days I get embarrassed to be part of a system these days where students, quote-unquote, "run" the schools. Teachers and administrators do their best at times. Teachers and administrators do their best at times, but there's been a shift, a soft approach where students are called friends, or they're coddled if they come to class unprepared, strolling into classrooms with many needs, coming and going, do as they please with phones and earbuds, vying for their attention. And despite overworked and underpaid, us teachers, the number one reason they're leaving is because of student behavior and a lack of real consequences. We need more Joe Clarks as principals. What amount, so, school, what is it? It's an extension of home. Many of us teachers have observed over the years that kids haven't changed, but parenting has. Kids are paying a huge price for the immaturity, the immorality, and the selfishness that plagues our hearts and our homes. The root problem in our homes and schools is that our foundation is broken. As we know, many of America's oldest universities began by preachers and churches, and their main goal for education was to know God and Jesus Christ, who is truth and eternal life. So ever since the Supreme Court overstepped their boundary and mandated that class prayer was unconstitutional in June of 1962, public education has slowly eroded with sad and tragic consequences. Divorce, teenage immorality, suicide, violence have increased at times over 500% in some cases. Just last week, I talked with students who are terribly, they're scared at school, hoping that their administration has a safe and effective plan in place if violence ever occurs. But fortunately, there's a remnant, there always is. Christian educators, students pray in the hallways and classrooms, and as we walk in the school and see the sign that says, "In God we trust," we do trust Him to do the impossible. And we trust you, in City Council, to do what you perceive as perhaps impossible, to keep the tax rate and plan the school budget.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Peter Sepharati, and then last will be Dr. Farmer.
Hi, I'm Peter Sepharati, and I live in Ward 1. Pretty spicy in here tonight, I must say. I've been listening to some of the comments that people wanted to raise my taxes, and kind of, some of them are kind of interesting. I learned from a very impressive young lady who sat over there that the needs of taxpayers are not as important as the needs of the students and teachers. I wonder if she feels the same way when she's the one who's writing the tax, the checks to pay for it. I learned that lowering taxes will drive business away, not attract it. No, raising taxes drives businesses away. How many businesses are moving from Florida to New York City to pay higher taxes? Not too many, I don't think. I learned that we should listen to the experts, and I'm thinking, geez, you mean like the ones running New York State, New York City, Illinois, Chicago? They needed our tax dollars to stay afloat this year, billions of them. How about the ones who set fire to the chemicals in New Palestine, Ohio? They were experts. How did that turn out? Who's going to bail us out when the expert's doing the same thing every year, spending more money and getting the same old substandard results? And the system falls apart. Heard about human servicing, services. These people need our support, and they need competitive pay. They do a very important job. I heard about innovation, which means doing something in a new way, and I'm wondering, perhaps the school board needs to innovate better ways to educate our children with less money, because money is not the key to a better education. I want to know, are they teaching the kids how to learn? That is a skill. This doesn't happen by writing on a blackboard. I learned when I went to school, I got a great public education, but I learned early that I had to teach myself and not rely on the teachers. It's all, it's the attitude of the students, you have to, really, the last speaker, you have to groom the attitude of the students to learn. I don't know if that's being done. I hope it is, but I don't know. Let me see, where am I? Number five, number six, where's the, oh yeah, schools, oh boy. I'd like to know, are they now a success or a failure? We heard about being a success, but I understand that they're not even rated average. I mean, I hope that's not possible, but I'd like to know how much more is success going to cost? Is it, I'd like to know, is it possible to get better results with better ideas instead of more money? Again, innovation. I'm wondering if unneeded real estate could be sold or rented to help fund school operations instead of draining school funding? I'm wondering if fighting disorder and, fighting disorder in the classrooms will not be ended by raising taxes. The school board needs to develop and implement policies which remove disorder and chaos from the classrooms. Teachers do not need to put up with it. That's ridiculous. How much, perhaps quiet and order in the classrooms would foster better education with larger class sizes. This would cost nothing. Why should teachers have to put up with disorder
Thank you.
on the job, which City Council wouldn't stand for
Thank you very much.
in these meetings?
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
And our last speaker of the night will be Dr. Brenda Farmer, representing the NAACP.
Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Ferrari, in your absence, and council members, good evening. My name is Dr. Brenda Farmer, and I have the honor and privilege of being the president of the Lynchburg NAACP Unit 7088. Would all members of the NAACP please stand? Some had to leave. Thank you. We would like for you to consider adjusting your rate of 89 cents. We feel our city manager and his team, who you hired to advise the city, has given us a picture of what the city of Lynchburg needs, as well as what will happen if the budget is modified. Yes, we agree our safety is a must, and we need to fund them. When looking at the services which will be cut, that is where we draw the line. On your budget proposal, March 21st, signed by Councilman Ferrari, Hegelston, Taylor, and Ms. June, they represented, they presented five areas they feel the budget performance expectations needs their personal input. These five points are what is being addressed this evening from the Lynchburg NAACP. Your point number one: your general fund budget analysis is not in a reasonable guideline of what is needed for the city of Lynchburg. We need a clearer understanding of your comment on the private sector approach to having continual improvement in all sections of city government. Your point number two: tax and fee reductions. Your proposal, does that mean you will be offering less services? For example, the waived refuge collection for 2024, and the waived the motor vehicle license fee for 2024? We need clarity. Your point number three: public school result. Your 5% raise should be across the board, cut and dry, for everybody. Another in-depth look at the school rating scores for all schools. Don't pick and choose, look at all the schools. Your point number four: public safety. We are in favor of a 5% pay raise, but be sure work is comparable for increases. What metrics are you talking about to show that public safety will improve in three months? Your point number five: city services. 5% pay raise for necessary functions where needed. Where are the 5% functions needed? This needs to be explained. The statement pertaining to private sector constantly competing for lower prices does not apply to all of them. It depends on where you live. Got to make sure that increases and decreases are needed in all areas. Accountability is the bottom line. In closing, I pray that this council will come together for the betterment of Lynchburg. May I suggest you go back and look at what the city manager is proposing and what the four councilmen are proposing? There needs to be a balance, and unity is needed to get this balance, all seven of you, all seven. Thanks for allowing me to come on behalf of the NAACP. We will be monitoring you. We got our eyes and our ears on you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. That concludes our public comments. The meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be held next week, May 2nd, 2023, at 4:00 p.m. in the second-floor training room.